This is now 6:02. We're going to call the St. Johnsbury School Board to order. I have all of our school directors here this evening. We have, this is actually a regularly, essentially a regularly scheduled meeting that we rescheduled from Eclipse Day. We would have normally met on that date, so this is a regularly scheduled meeting. I am at this point, I don't necessarily have to make a motion to call the meeting to order, but at this point I'm going to make a recommendation that we change the agenda. The agenda was published, and so now would be the time public to change the agenda. Do I have to make a motion, or can I just do it? I think you can just do it. I can make a change, but I don't need to have it approved before. That's my, okay. So I'm actually going to move public comment, which is normally at the end of our meeting, up to the discussion around the budget. I will also consider, partly because I don't know that I necessarily have enough time to, unless it relates to the budget, to necessarily review anything else that particularly anything in the superintendent's report, finance report, or principal's report that doesn't have to be addressed at present, that we gave ourselves time to think about that. So if you could just alert me to any important business that has to be addressed tonight, but if anything could be put off that's not related to the budget.
You would still need to do action items.
Correct. So we will, I'm going to go ahead and keep Karen's, Karen and Jacob's consent agendas on there. We're going to keep it very brief, and the principals can add anything, but I think that a lot of it's going to come up and be redundant to the budget discussion at present. And then we will go ahead and continue to do our action items, because we do need to continue the work of the school board and of the school. So at this point, beyond that, given those, are there any additional additions or deletions to the agenda?
Do you want to keep committee updates, or no?
I would suggest. I think we should wait. I think we're going to have enough to digest tonight, and I think that we should wait. If there's anything pertinent, please bring it to our attention. But we can't move forward in any other plans until we address the most pressing issue.
The next year's meeting is scheduled. Can we wait three weeks from now?
I think it's going to have to. Yeah. So we'll also take that off. Thank you. So really, the only discussion item we're going to keep on the agenda for today is going to be the budget. At this point, I'm going to move on to the approval of the minutes from March 18th and April 10th. Does anyone see any problems, or like to make any changes to the meeting note, meeting note, meeting minutes for those dates? I think everyone was present, right? I think we're good on the minutes you've stayed. Okay, good. I'd like to make a motion at this time that we approve the minutes for March 18th and April 10th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Motion passes. And now let's move on to the discussion items portion of the budget, of the evening's meeting. Karen is going to start off by giving us, actually, I'm going to take a second and preface it, if that's okay with you. Okay. So obviously, the most important agenda item that we have here tonight is our budget. We've now failed twice, and that is a position that no district wants to be in, but we're not the only ones. This is a much larger statewide discussion that has come to our doors. There's really not much we can do about that. So we have a lot more awesome participation, and I'm really excited about that. And I want to thank everyone for being here. We're going to give everybody a chance to address the board before any decisions are going to be made. I will tell you, as somebody who loves process, really, really loves process, really loves deliberate process, really likes planning, really likes to work backwards, this has been an incredibly, incredibly frustrating year. I'm an incredibly problem-solving-oriented person, and I see many, many opportunities for our school to improve the way we do things. I see many, many opportunities for us to decrease the overall impact on our taxpayers, because I've looked very closely at where the money is going. And so, we have a lot of really good ideas, but until we get through this process, can't do it. And I'm going to be really honest with all of you who are sitting in this room and to the larger audience out there, that there is an opportunity cost for every decision that we make. So all of this time that I've spent, that Karen's spent, it's important, and we want this discussion to happen, but it's come at a cost. It's just hats. There's no, no way to sugarcoat that for all of us. This has been an extremely difficult process for the school board, and it's been an extremely difficult process for school administrators, and it's been an extremely difficult process for our teachers and our paraprofessionals and the people who care, and parents, and taxpayers, all of us. And the most difficult part of it is, is that we're trying to explain a constantly changing, extremely complicated process. It seems so simple, right? How much does it cost to run a school? That's a very question. We can tell you how much it costs to run our school. But a lot of those decisions aren't in our, aren't in our, you know, every student who comes, who's in our district has certain rights, whether it be they're a homeless student, whether they be a student who is on a 504 or an IP, or whether they're just a student, right? They have rights. They have a right to be here. They have a right to feel safe. They have a right to access to mental health care. They have a right to physical health care. And it's all falling into this building to be done. So when you talk about what it takes to run a school, what you're, sorry, what you're really talking about is what does it mean to raise a community? And I understand that parents have choices. Believe me. I have three young boys. I've sat around my kitchen table and tried to figure out what we're going to do. And I chose to be here. And I think that Karen has chosen to be here. I think she could go a lot of places. And that's not saying that we haven't held her feet to the fire and we haven't asked her tough questions. We have. And I know that she has turned around and asked those tough questions to the other people in the building. But there is a lot of work to be done, and we're trying to do our best. And Karen's been really upfront with me that if there's one thing she could have done more of this year, is be in this building. But I would tell you, we are about to deploy about, and I always overestimate, millions of dollars of federal funds that we will never, ever, ever get the opportunity to spend again. And if we deploy those wrong, we're still going to have to pay for them, because someday all those, all that IOUs are going to come due. And they're going to come at the backs of my kids and all of our kids, because they're the taxpayers when those IOUs are going, that money was borrowed. Let's be honest about how the federal government runs things, right? So, here we are. And at this point, we are presented with some challenges, and we are presented with some decisions. I got the opportunity to step away for a second, and I was part of this, at the hotel, at a hotel at the same time as this other organization. And part of the organization's ethos is a rose, a thorn, and a bud. So what are our, our rose, our thorns, our bud? What are the things we're doing well? What are the things that hurt? And what are the things that are opportunities? And so I want you to know that we are constantly asking ourselves those questions. And as part of this process, we've had to do it even more rushed, which makes it feel a lot more risky. So, we're going to make some, we're going to give everybody an opportunity. I'd like to think at the end of this, we're going to be able to make some decisions. I've been really upfront with Karen that I don't want to feel overly rushed. I just, I can't. I have to process information. My husband is probably my number one. He's always in the back of my ear, because he's so deliberate, and I can be a little bit rushed, right? So it just, so we're going to listen to information, and we're going to hopefully be able to move forward. Okay? Thank you, Karen. I really appreciate all the work you've done to get us to this point.
So I don't know if you want to stay there or move your chairs back.
Oh, we probably, because we, yeah, this is some, we're learning as fast as you are, so maybe we should, maybe we should sit. Do you want to just sit for a second? Okay.
So, thank you, everyone. My name is Karen Conroy. I'm the superintendent here for St. Johnsbury School District. It's an honor to be here this evening, and great to see participants both online and in person. And as Abby just summarized, we're facing difficult times. If anyone knows me, though, I always try to take a positive side to things. We're not alone. I was on a conference call today, meeting the new Secretary of Education, and we were able to speak and talk about some of the concerns with education right now. And there are so many of us that are facing these same community discussions and having their budgets failed. And people care about their community. People care about their kids. But it's, it's hard when it's impacting incomes and with cost of living and inflation and everything going on. It's understandable. But I can say, we're not the only ones that are struggling. And I know the board is feeling a little rushed with what we're putting forward, but I don't want to take the time or lose that opportunity to lose any of my staff. I really appreciate the people that we have here. I care for them deeply. I know they are doing the right things for our students. Yes, we have room for growth. We always do. Our students, every day, entering our buildings are different, right? They're coming in with different things that we haven't seen, you know, 20 years ago. And so, I know we're in a good place, and I'm pushing to make these decisions just so we don't lose staff, because there are jobs everywhere, very close, just down the road. And so I do hope that I can put this presentation together that provides enough information for some decisions to be made, so that I can get contracts out. Our association was very kind. They were due on Monday, and they extended our deadline until Friday to give us a few more days to process. So I'm hopeful that we can make some decisions, so we can hand out contracts and move forward in our planning for next year. So, I can't say that these are rushed conversations. We've been talking about this as we go through the budget process. I'm actually going to present a couple options for the board to consider for additional cost reduction. They all hurt. In one shape or form, they hurt our school community. Any of these reductions have an impact on our buildings, on our classroom activities. They all have an impact, but there isn't a lot of play in the, in the budget itself. And that's why I'm hoping, if you have questions, that you ask them this evening, because we tried to look at how we can have the least impact on our students and learning and our staff, but they all have an impact. I'll say that upfront. And just for those, to bring everybody up to speed, this is why we are here. Our budget has failed again. The latest tally is there's 32 budgets that have been defeated as of April 11th, and they've had, the second votes have been defeated as well. So again, we're not alone. The margins are pretty close. I think the first time we had more voters, the margins was a little bit closer at 48%. The second time it was 45% in favor. So, I mean, we're very, we're close. But again, we need voters out. We need to get our voters out and heading to the polls. What we did present, our original proposed budget, we presented a budget with $506,281 less, and that is what failed. And as we're looking at these, our budget in general, and as we are trying to make decisions, we constantly focus on our strategic plan. Everything that we're doing is built upon this plan that was developed by the school board, by the community, by participants in the school. Parents were involved. And so a lot of our decisions have been made based on our strategic plan. And I mention that because some of these decisions go against, it delays our strategic plan. It's totally against when it comes to student opportunities and programming. It's not what we have planned, so I only bring that to your attention. I also want to bring to your attention, this is something that we put in the annual report. It was options. There's actually four. You can't see the one on the bottom, but we had given some options to the school board, and this was back when there was a 5% cap on our budgets, and we were looking at different options. But I want to point out option one, because we currently have a budget of $26,141,467. If we did nothing, nothing at all, had a completely level budget, we would have to raise $28 million, this is number one, $28,804,15. That is what we need to have in our budget at least. And why that is, there are items in our budget that have negotiated or are not within our control. Our high school tuitions, where we pay what they bill us. We have had increased transportation costs, our insurance costs. We don't even have control of benefit packages anymore. We can't negotiate that. That's done at a state level. So even with a level, nothing changed on our budget, not adding any additional positions that were in ESER for the last few years, we would need to raise $28,800,000 to meet the obligations that we have. And some of those obligations, like I said, is tuition. We have a pre-K through eight program, but we have to pay tuition for our high school students. And I can tell you, and if Kara Lufkin was here, we have spent a lot of time trying to negotiate some of these contracts. Regular education, it's announced tuition. It's set by the state, and we're required to pay it. Therapeutic programs, we have to pay whatever they charge. It's sad, but there's 10 kids waiting for those spots, so they really, they don't care, right? We just have to pay the cost. We have been trying very, very hard to negotiate the services, the tuitions, the needs of our students, but some we are restricted. And in some of the guidelines, independent schools have a set rate, an allowable rate, but the career center, like Linden Institute and even St. Johnsbury Academy, their tuitions, they can set them a little higher because they have a career center. So those increases that they have put into their tuition, we have to pay that as a community. That is part of this budget. I've seen a lot of comments and feedback that it's about the school. We have over 1,000 kids. It includes those students that are attending our high schools and those students that are attending therapeutic and at a district placement. So those costs also have to be taken into consideration. We also had negotiated salaries, and I bring, I bring this in because it's kind of confusing. People didn't get an 8% raise or a 10% raise. It's based on new money. So this is the amount of money for our professional staff we have to put in the budget based on negotiated salaries, an additional $454,000. And we have 99 professional staff members that work here. Some are grant-funded, and I understand there's a lot of questions about grants. And I'm going to try to get, I'd like to get an organizational chart. We've been trying really hard to pull it together. An organizational chart showing you which positions are grant-funded, which are coming out of local, so that you have a clearer picture of who's working here in this school community. Paraeducators, the new money that was negotiated, added $136,800 to our budget. The base salary for a paraprofessional, paraeducator in our building is $17.15. It's hard to attract people at that rate, and those people are just so valuable to our organization. So many of our students in the whole district, we have like 263 kids on IEPs. There's about 159, 150-something here in our building, and then we have 111 that are in the high school. We still support them. That's district costs. Once they graduate here in eighth grade, they're still our student until they graduate. And trust me, I keep track of them. I've tried implementing systems to really keep track of those students. So when they graduate here, I'm still checking on them. I'm making sure that we're advocating for them, and we do that for so many students with learning disabilities, 504s, other, other needs. So we, we are working on that, but that is this whole district cost. It's just not about the school. And I just wanted to stress on that. And I stress on that because my, my proposals, I can't touch those things, right? So anything I do impacts the school. I can't renegotiate tuition. Those are announced by the state. I have tried working even at the state level with legal counsel interim secretary Heather Boucher. You know, I've tried to get different rates for us, and I have not been successful. I haven't given up, but I'm not, haven't been successful. So any, any proposed reduction impacts the students in this building, not outside of this building. So it impacts the 630 students that are in our building. I can't touch those other costs. And right now, we have 43% of the cost is related just to tuition. The numbers that you see on salaries and benefits, that also includes district employees. We have paraprofessionals. We have case managers. We have people that are just dedicated to district services. But I, it's included in the salary and benefits. So that's, that's more than just the school and those costs, just so you're aware. So when I, when I look at these proposed reductions, it's really difficult. These are the people I see every day. And have to consider the changes that could be impacting what they're doing with students, some of the supports they have, and, but this, I think, is what our community is asking for. Or I'm not sure what they're asking for, because even if we had a level budget, it will still add 23 cents to the tax rate because of your common level appraisal. I can't fix the common level appraisal. You'll get reappraised. Your houses will be reappraised. Where I live in my community, just a little ways away, I have the same problem. I'm like in the 72% for my common level appraisal. My taxes are going up, and I live in a choice community with no school. So no matter what we do, we're not going to be able to save you the extra 23 cents on the tax rate unless you decrease the budget. Or unless, and I'm looking over here, unless legislation changes how it's calculated before the end of the session. So I am proposing, and again, we have been giving this a lot of thought, maybe knowing that this could be coming down the road after hearing other failures and conversations that we've had with the leadership team and staff. I have three different proposals, three different options for reductions. And so I've kind of categorized them. Like I said, they all have impact. No matter what we do, we'll have impact, a negative impact on our community, school community. The first has minimal impacts on students. The second option is staffing adjustments based on cohort size. So it's the size of a grade, and I'll share more on that. And the third option is reductions in student programs and opportunities, because we were, we have been getting a lot of feedback about ESER funds and how we've used ESER funds. And one of the options that we have done with ESER is provide more opportunities for students. So I do put that in front of the board to also look. I'm not interested in them heading that way, but it is an option that I think we need to review and discuss. So if I look at minimal impact on students, reduce, reduce, remove. So this option, it has a total potential savings of $232,396. One thing I hate doing is deferring maintenance, okay? It's why we're in the situation we are in Vermont. Why would you not stay on top of things, right? We try not to do that with our home, but this is at the expense of, you know, getting a budget passed. So we would look at pulling out some construction projects that we had in one area of the building. We're now using it for after-school and summer school programming. At one point in the building, they made offices where there used to be, I believe it was the course room originally, and they never completed the project, so they didn't go all the way up to the walls and complete the construction. We had planned on doing that to give those offices room and privacy in those offices. We have pulled that money out. We had also planned on painting the building this year, and we, we pulled that, that funding out of the budget. It also included some cost estimates that just came in on door locks. We're still planning on doing door locks. We had left them in the budget, but we had an updated quote that reduced by 40,000. So it's a total of 120,000 savings. What I haven't removed for construction projects, so if you look at, like in the town report, it has a detailed line by line, we're required to change out our lighting to LED lighting. And so that's like a $120,000 project. We can't buy light bulbs in the state of Vermont anymore. It's something we're required to do, and there's also a $40,000 grant that is an incentive. So we have left that in the budget for our deferred maintenance. And on a really positive note, we have $3.1 million of construction with ESER money scheduled for this summer. So we have plenty of projects, and we're addressing a lot of the needs, from replacing roofs to concrete work, to replacing old carpeting, floors. We're taking advantage of that federal funding. So I think we have plenty of, we're utilizing that funding to take care of a lot of the needs of our building. The next section was looking individually at supplies and contracted services. And we have looked individually at classroom teacher supplies, the principal's supplies, some supplies for outdoor learning. We do have some ESER money that we'll be able to use through the end of September. So we're hoping that the supplies can come, be reallocated and come out of there to meet the needs of our classrooms, but we're looking at reducing the supplies in those contracted services of 76,000. And then the last position, which if I had custodial staff here, they'd probably be very disappointed, but we had a part-time position that we had not filled for the third, it would be a third shift position. Patrick was holding off on this because he was questioning if it would be part of the cuts, and so we have chosen not to fill that position for the next school year. And then there was also an adjustment with someone retiring early next year, so there's a decrease in cost. So again, this is option one. I'm calling it. It, you know, when you're touching supplies, any of the contracted services, it all has an impact, but this would have the least impact we felt on students for 232,000. Option two gets a little more tricky, and it's dealing with staffing adjustments based on the size of the grade, the cohort in certain grades. And I'll share with you those numbers, so you can see our enrollment numbers. We added a pre-K classroom right after COVID, so we have three pre-K classrooms. We did this really because of the needs that our independent programs that we're seeing, they just really couldn't address some of the support needs, and so we opened up another classroom. We kept all of our pre-K enrollment numbers down pretty low, so we could really provide intense services for our students. But we understand that, you know, But we understand that, you know, we can still support about 30 kids, but put them in two classrooms. So we're talking about reducing a pre-K classroom next year, which would reduce it by a teacher and a paraprofessional. We also have five kindergarten classrooms. This is something else we did during COVID. We know based on scientific research, studies show kids learn better in smaller classrooms. But if we have to make some cuts, this is an area where we could reduce down to four. And again, I'll show you cohort numbers. If we had the normal enrollments, we probably wouldn't be able to do this. But it makes sense that we reduce to four classrooms. So this would be every class K through eight would have four classrooms. And that's a saving of $188,811. We also, we're looking at reducing paraprofessionals that are called general ed paraprofessionals. Right now we have approximately 60 paraprofessionals in our building. And about, the numbers change every day because we have people come and go. But we used to have, we're required to have paraprofessionals in pre-K by law. But we used to have paraprofessionals for classroom pairs in K one and two. We're down to just having a few now. So we feel that we could reduce paraprofessionals as a general classroom support in our first grade classroom. And this is a savings of $193,578. The other paraprofessionals in our building are serving students either with IEPs or for one-on-one services. And there are about 100, I think it's 52 IEPs in, in this building. And then the last would be looking at reducing one fifth grade classroom teacher and one sixth grade. We would turn to a more humanities approach for social studies and ELA. And again, it's only because of the class size that we could consider this. So this, it has a little more savings for a total of $536,528. And if you look at the cohorts, what we're anticipating on coming in for student enrollments in kindergarten and one is lower than, we usually are around the 60, 65 student enrollment number. We're seeing lower enrollments coming in in K and one. And then if you look in fifth and script, fifth and sixth grade, we also have anticipated lower class sizes. So we feel that we could do it and still support students. It's going to be more students in a classroom. You'd be looking at 16, 17 students, but it's very doable. And then the final option, number three, is reductions in student opportunities and programming. And this would totally be going away from what we've worked so hard for under the strategic plan. And really, it just takes away options. And it takes away flexibility, not just for, for students with, with teachers, but it also for any type of intervention or any services. It also doesn't provide that block of time to help students. So it really, when you have, I don't think smaller schools have this problem, but because we have 600 and something kids in a building, it's really difficult. If you have only one U-Arts health teacher, for example, supporting all the students. So this would be reducing three of the U-Arts position totaling $240,433. And it would be looking at, we have a, one of our PE teachers. It would also reduce, reduce a health teacher. And I hate to even consider it because technology I think is so important, but it would be STEAM. STEAM is another program that we just offered since COVID and trying to expand on our offerings. If we selected all of these options, they're individually set here, but I'm not sure if everybody can see the total. It is a potential cost savings or cost reduction of a million dollars. And again, we've broken them up, just thinking about the minimal impact on students. You know, based on cohort size, it would make sense. We may need to add them back depending on what enrollment is for the next year. And then reductions though in student opportunities. And I'm, I'm sorry, I was trying to throw all this data together quickly. But if you look at the impact on the tax rate, it would change. What were we at before, did you go 130? Yeah, on our last budget, I was thinking it was 134. So the first option would save a penny on the tax rate for the school district tax rate. If you added the next option, it would save the additional. We would save three more cents on the tax rate. And then with a final option, would be down to 128, so that's the five cents. Not a, not a whole lot of savings with a million dollars. But it would get our budget down to that level budget as far as what we have control with. But it would take away, it could potentially take away those student services and offerings. So. For the tax rate or the details?
Have you heard from any other districts on this, the LED law that was passed? I mean, I can't imagine too many districts are going to be compliant with that law. Is anyone talking about this?
Um, I know they just had a facilities meeting downstate and not many people have done it.
The law just said you can't buy them in Vermont, right? Is it illegal for us to go to New Hampshire and buy fluorescents?
I was told it was. I was told it would not be good practice, yeah.
So I think, okay, just a quick logistical thing. I believe this presentation is, is copies of it by the door, is that correct, Karen?
Oh, no, I did not make copies, but I, we can.
I can't sit there because the projector's in my face, so we gotta figure out how to do that. So I just want to give one quick clarification regarding how, and this is, one thing I, I did as part of my, we do. One of the things I've heard is that we don't do such a great job at giving people reviews, right? So I've heard that from school. We do a better job of reviewing our staff, reviewing administrators. So I'm trying to start at the top, we do a review every year. One of the things that, I'll just tell you that the school board, as part of our goals for the year was to use more data to, to make decisions. So that's something we're really trying to do. The other thing is that we have a professional development, like, just like everyone else, we have professional development requirements. So Karen and I did a training, we do have, we're required to, what, nine hours a year together? So we're engaging in that, it's happening. So one of the things that they really talk a lot about is just sort of like meeting practice. So I'm trying to like begin the way I want to end. So I, I try, it feels a little formal, but that's because I kind of feel like we need to just, as I feel, as part of the work I've done for, through the professional development of the school board association, that we have to have some structure to this. So this meeting technically is a meeting of the school board in public. It's actually not a public meeting. We had public meetings, we had four of them in the last round. We will again, by law, we will have another public meeting. As part of this decision-making, we want to hear from the public, but we have to kind of, really, this shouldn't really be. Karen's here to answer questions, but it, it's not good practice for us to conduct a public meeting without warning, warning it. This was a school board meeting in public. So that said, good practice would be for us to have a discussion as a school board. I want to, normally we have public discussion at the end because again, it's a meeting of the school board in public. But we've moved that up because it is a really, it's like we want to hear from everybody. So we're going to have, we're going to answer our questions first. We'll open up to the public and then we'll attempt to make a decision. So with that said, I'm going to open this up to questions from the school board regarding Karen's. Actually, I want to, I'm going to start. I have a couple of clarifications that I want to, comments regarding Karen's presentation. The first is regarding negotiations, because I'm responsible for that. I do the negotiations with you. So you blame me, I gave them a raise. I'm trying to stay competitive with the neighboring districts. We've done a really great job at filling our positions and I want to continue to stay competitive. We've looked at what's out there. We know there are good jobs for teachers close by. We want to stay competitive. I'm also a person who believes in a living wage. And I wanted our paraprofessionals to be able to afford to work in our building. One of the things that I think is missed as part of this discussion is the fundamental shift in the way that schools provide special education. We no longer rely on a parent educator model to provide special education. We have gone from budgeting from 91 paraprofessionals in our building to 47? Special, paraprofessionals. Correct, we have 11 classroom, we have 11 general ed paraprofessionals. And we have, we have another number that are, we are required from our IEPs. So we're working very, very hard at delivering special education in the most data-driven way. We're not there, it's a huge process. IEPs are a three-year process. You know, we are making progress towards making sure that our special education is delivered. But we need these paraprofessionals and they need to be on the floor to live in our community and they need to be able to afford to work in our building. And if they can go get a job somewhere else that's less stressful at a higher wage, I, you know, I don't want them to have to make that decision. So I take responsibility for the negotiations. If you have a problem with it, I'm happy to talk to you about it, happy to tell you why we made the decisions that we do. But I believe in strongly that we are not above market. We're right where we need to be. We want people to be able to live in our community. We did agree to a two-year contract. So that brings a lot of stability to our budget in the coming year because we can be able to do that hard process-driven work that we want to do. So I want to take responsibility for the negotiations. That was on me, that's not Karen, that's me. The other thing we've gotten a lot of questions are about is the administration, are we administration-heavy? And that's something that Karen and I have talked about. And I don't have this in front of me, but I believe that, and I'm going to ask this as a question to Karen, if you could share a little bit with us how we rate an administration per pupil when we look at, because we are, we are very large, we are significantly large school for our area. So having two principals sounds like a lot, but they're serving 600, almost 650 students. There's 647 this year and maybe a little bit less this year. We have a dean of students. We've never had one before. We desperately need that position. We can't ask our principals to do the curriculum work without having that added layer of support that our students literally desperately need. We do a lot with grant funding around meeting students' needs. And we're going to continue to do that. Really bummed we can't paint the building. That's a really, that to me, like fundamentally just really bugs me. I think that's really dumb. Sorry, I shouldn't use that word, I don't allow my kids to use it. But like that really just doesn't seem smart. We have a concrete building, you gotta seal it every year. Fail to seal it, you get water intrusion. That's a real bummer. I also committed as part of our strategic plan to open up our buildings to the public. I believe in that strongly. I want our students and our kids to have safe places to go. It's a real bummer that we can't fill that third shift position. Because that really allows us to have a clean shift, you know, like we just, we just can't open up our building if there's nobody here. So we're going to have to figure out how maybe we can look at bringing that back. Because I think it's really important for our community to have this space available to them. It's a real, that would really cut to the core of our, of our strategic plan. Those are my comments and questions. Can you share with me the administration numbers per student? The ones that you shared with us at some point regarding the per principal numbers? Do you have those handy or maybe we can come back to it in a second? Do you know what I'm referencing? Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we take a second? We're going to give Karen a second, because again, this is, you guys can be patient with us. I'm going to give Karen a second to find it and I'm going to take, open this up to some other questions or comments from the board. I think the board is struggling with wanting to hear from the public, which is totally understandable. So we can open this up to the public and then we can have some more time to reflect on things. And you let us know, Karen, anybody. Is there any member of, I'm going to start with people in the room that would like to address the board? Okay. Do you want to show that? Please go to microphone.
Oh, we don't need to go to the mic.
You can just stand up and speak. And I would ask, it's important also for process that we state our name and we're, what town we're in. Obviously, we are, we are, we have lots of trace districts around us. So it's very well likely that there are people in this building.
Tell me, Abby, what I need to do, all right?
Not me, the other one.
I'll use my teacher voice, it's pretty good. All right. My name is Gretchen Steen. I am a resident of St. Johnsbury, a taxpayer. I am a parent of two wonderful children who attend this school and love it. And I am also a teacher here. I am the preschool special educator for the school district. I was trying to make lots of edits and also pay attention at the same time. So I forget my edits and I'm just going to read what I had. In the finance report, which we didn't read, but just to quote that, it said, I believe this tent, this vote, this most recent April 9 vote, was the town telling us their feelings towards budget increases and that they, and that they need us to do more to lower their property taxes to ensure they can still afford their house. I don't think that's true. I think this vote tells you that 450 people feel this way. And for this vote, unfortunately, that was the majority. Of course, none of us want our taxes to go up. I strongly believe in public education. I never thought I'd say that, don't tell my parents that because I went to a private school, but things have changed for me. But there are many of us that realize that this is a larger statewide issue driven by the state education funding system, common level appraisal, property taxes. And we further realize that the school budget, the parts that this board has any control over are a fraction of the total education budget, which includes things like the St. Johnsbury Academy. So as some of us are reaching out to people who did not vote on April 9, or finding that our friends and our neighbors, people in this community, do support the budget, but they simply did not know that the vote was happening. One person that I've been in contact with in the last 36 hours has contacted 21 people who didn't vote on April 9, but voted for the budget on town meeting day. 21 people who are enthusiastic supporters and have committed to voting yes on the next ballot. But they did not realize that there was a vote on April 9. We can all realize now that the day after a solar eclipse was not the right day to hold a vote. Now that we've been through that, we can understand that. But there were a lot of failings from that. Where were the robo calls to this town? We get a text every time the bus is broken down or the bus makes a wrong turn. But where was the robo call, the text? But where was the robo call, the text? Signs around town? The academy held a staff meeting late that afternoon with mandatory attendance and no reminder to go vote when it was over. No reminder to vote when our taxes are paying for the students and the staff and the functioning of the academy. For all of these people that we're talking about in this presentation to lose their jobs because we failed to get the information to the people who need it is upsetting. For students to have larger class sizes, fewer supports and underfunded classrooms because none of us, myself included, could do much more than a couple of Facebook posts. It's devastating. I've pledged to do more going forward. Many other parents and people in this town, a lot of whom are in this room and are on Zoom, have also pledged to do that going forward. Our strategic plan is working. We have a lot of the peo, a lot of the right people and the right places to make positive impacts for students. Taking those away now shifts the entire scaffold that we've been building to support all of our students. Thank you.
Abby, do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to make a comment or is there any questions in the chat?
Can I just speak or do I have to get up?
You can just stand up.
All right, I'm going to stand up. So I'm Val Elliott. I'm from St. Johnsbury. I have two students, not from St. Johnsbury, from New York, but, let's say, John, right? And I have two students in the school and recently started subbing at the school. And I also am a strong leader of education. And my kids love going to this school. And one of the things that my, um, sixth grader talks about is STEAM. And I'm so excited that I go with STEAM. And, um, the few days that I have subbed at the school, I have really enjoyed it. I have a new appreciation of how hard are these, the teachers' jobs are and the paras' jobs. And I really relied on the par educators to help me get through the day. And this school is full of amazing kids and they just have so much potential. And they just need our support. They just need us to believe that they deserve this and they deserve our support. I'm probably more of a socialist, so I believe that we should just redo the vote and just pledge back up. But it's probably not going to be, that's going to happen. But I would say, as Gretchen was saying, there's a lot of people who didn't get out and vote. There's, I think that we kind of got laxadaisical about the last couple of years just having the vote happen. You know, it gets passing and passing and passing and it's not the norm. So I beg of you guys to, to take a little bit, just a little bit out of budget. That's what you got to do. Whatever that number one was, I wish you didn't have to do that. And, and trust in your community to come out and get this vote out because we will, we will make it pass. Thank you.
Someone told me, oh, yeah, that you have to pause. Yeah, I see, sorry. I did pause and I shut you off.
Hi, I'm Sarah Borries. Um, I live in Kirby and we have three kids who are here at the St. J school. And I don't get to vote on the budget, but I, I'm not going to lie, I probably wouldn't have voted on Tuesday because I didn't really know about it and Tuesday was crazy. Um, and I should have said something at the academy faculty meeting and I didn't because it was all crazy. Um, but I, I am part of this group of people who really wants to help everybody know when the next vote is happening and help people get there and remind people. And so I agree with Val, I think we should, um, I, I, I think try again with no cuts. Well, that first cut if you have to, um, but give us a, give us another chance.
So, uh, my name is Andrea Darby. I have three kids, well, two here now. I'm curious how come if the initial proposed budget didn't pass and the numbers are all worked up, why didn't you default to the, where they cut the ESER positions? If the, if it's all, I mean, it's already.
Sure, I'll make, I'll answer that question because I can, I gave that decision. I mean, with the board's support, I, I made a recommendation to the board and I. I felt like a sick, given the headwinds of one-third in the budgets, one-third of the budgets in the state failing, the headwinds were really tough for us. And if you looked at all of the, if you looked at sort of a more meta data look at it, the fact that our budget only failed by that amount was actually, to me, somewhat pleasantly surprising. I really thought we had the support. I straight up did. I was wrong. I made an assumption that we would be able to get our people out. And I was wrong. That's why.
Wait, wait, can I just follow up? Just to clarify, so I understand what you're asking. Your question is after we failed the first budget, why didn't we take out the, like the U R S positions at that point? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I don't, I don't. What are the ESER positions? Can I ask that question? Sure, well, it's, okay, so it's, it's not that easy because I'm going to be straight up with you. We, there was a decision made in the previous administration to put our nurses into the ESER positions. We have to have nurses in our building. So those had to come back. So if you want to call it an ESER position, you could consider that an ESER position. If, if, those have to be paid for and they're expensive. Like, and we have, actually, we have fantastic nurses. We are so lucky. Through anecdotally, I understand that our head nurse right now went and looked at all the other schools and chose ours. So what we did was make, and it didn't work quite the way we thought. And I learned some really important things about asking tough questions. I'm going to be really straightforward with you. Had I go back, I would have asked a little more tough questions because there were positions that were supposed to be in local funds that we'd agreed to as a community that somehow just didn't get there. And one of them was the outdoor ed position. We had made the decision that our kids deserve to ski as much as everybody else. Our kids deserve to get outside just as much as every other community that makes that happen for their kids. So we had, we, we wanted outdoor ed position because it's more than a classroom teacher can do. That's what happened. That's why our kids weren't skiing is because we didn't have, the classroom teachers had nap and to do, and the principals had enough to do that they couldn't get there. So that didn't happen. I didn't ask a tough question. That's an ESER position that should have been in the local budget. It wasn't. So that's number one. The other thing that we did when we looked at learning loss was we particularly were seeing large amounts of learning loss and struggle in our middle school. When you have a building like ours, we have three, four-year-olds and you have, what, I don't even know. I don't have one. So they thirteen, fourteen years old probably, right? Yeah, they need longer blocks to prepare them for high school than the younger kids do. They need access to different things. We did not have the ability prior to investing in the middle school to be able to do those things for our middle school students. And what we were hearing was that we were sending kids to high schools unprepared and unable to thrive there. We were making investments in our kids to prepare them to thrive in the next place because we can't be there, remember? We're not there. We got to do our best. And when they fail, that's all on us and we take responsibility for it and we do it with grace, but it's expensive. So we made it the ESER position. Another section of that money was the investments in what we called our new arts to decouple the schedule between the lower school and the upper school. That was something we looked at through the strategic plan and knew we needed to make investments in our middle school and that's what it looked like. So we didn't want to cut that because we made a commitment to voice and choice for our middle school students and we're not able to do that unless we can keep those positions.
So I do have a list.
Okay.
A list of specific positions that were added, um, since FY twenty twenty-one that were ESER-funded. Um, they included the additional health teacher, librarian for the lower school, uh, a P E teacher, the outdoor learning teacher and a STEAM. There was also an assistant director of student services and our ESER grant manager and the part-time custodian.
And the ESER grant manager is, is grant-funded and we're going to, we're not putting that in the local budget? That's my understanding. Is that correct?
No, the ESER grant manager will continue being grant-funded.
Correct.
Through September.
Okay.
And then it's, then it's added to the local.
Follow-up question.
Could you explain what the assistant to, what was it? Assistant to.
Yep, yep. Assistant Director of Student Services.
Sure.
So there's a lot going on with changes with regulations as it pertains to special education. And, um, laws just went into effect in July. Um, we had funding changes that took place a couple of years ago that reduced our special ed funds. Um, and now the regulations started in July first. And we have approximately two hundred and sixty-three students on IUPs. Half of them are, little less than half, are outside of our district. Our, um, special ed director was not able to, um, take care of everyone. The contracts, the not hundreds and hundreds of contracts that she reviews and signs. It, it's really trying to put a focus on the district, okay? Who are the kids that are being in our out-of-district placements, making sure they're getting services? Whereas this new position is helping the school. So it's specifically in the building. So our case managers, we have twelve case managers, actually eleven, there's one, um, that we're looking to rehire. They have support in the building now for support. We look at changes for paraprofessionals, make sure we're utilizing staff properly. This is what that director, um, will be doing. And it's more to help support families and students because our director was just stretched too thin. She's a homeless liaison. We have, we have thirty-plus students that are homeless. She works, she's a five-on-four case manager. She deals with other districts when it comes to transportation and, um, utilizing, uh, services, shared services, shared costs. So it was just, I, since COVID, and of course I wasn't here then, but if I look at the numbers, I, it, our students have increased in, with IUPs, like forty, fifty kids. And so in order to better serve and also meet the regulations that we're required of, right now, we call it kind of a continuum of learning that if a kid is struggling in the past, we might've said, send him to special ed. It doesn't work that way. We need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence in the classroom, making sure that we've tried strategies and, and done our best to help that student before sending him to special ed and being identified with a disability. We're not preventing that from happening, but we're making sure we take steps. And this new position is a resource in this building available, um, to help support that.
Yeah, this is probably, this is just a question as of like here. So, so we pay tuition for our kids to go to the different high schools, right?
Yep.
But we're also having to pay for someone to do their IUPs that does not get taken into with the, uh, tuition cost?
No.
At all?
No, actually, um, different schools do it differently, but there's a separate fee. Some schools charge, um, if you have an IUP, doesn't even relate to your services. It's an extra added-on charge. But we also, um, provide our own people to go be paraprofessionals in those buildings to support students. That's not nor, the norm. Usually you're provided services and they bill you back for costs. But it's a relationship that we've had with the academy that we provide our own, um, paraprofessionals for students at times. But there's extra fees. Some are really expensive. If you were to just send a student to Arlington and they have an IUP, it's not the nineteen thousand, it's fifty-nine thousand.
So if we pay that fifty-nine thousand and then we're still sending someone? So we're, we're double?
No, we wouldn't send them to those. We just send them to the academy.
Okay, so you just, okay, so.
So each school, so each school's a little different depending, like if they set their parameters, right? Like we have to sort of respond to that.
And then like I said, I know this probably has nothing to do, I'm just like.
Sorry, yep.
My head around here. So like, okay, say the academy says, okay, you need to pay this ten thousand. Are we then paying them ten thousand dollars and paying someone to be with this IUP? Are we, are they double dipping?
I would hope not.
Oh, well, that, that's what I'm kind of feeling like might be happening.
Well, you're paying for additional services. You know, depending on what the student has for services, either IS or GS, um, they call it guided studies or, um, these independent services. So they could be getting other services while they're in the building and those fees would cover that.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. Yeah, I'm, sorry. Um, so are there any, I know you've explained the different ESER positions. Are there any that we, that have been looked at by the board at all? Or has it just been like, we just don't want to touch that? We've looked at all of them. I mean, we really did. I mean, we didn't, we looked at all of them. I will say though, you know, the, the five percent cap is a real difficult thing to do because the really important board budget work that we could have and should have, could, could do. But, I mean, the, the legislature literally changed the, the formula a week before we voted. Like long after we should have done all that work. I mean, we warned the budget. We, I mean, it, it was an impossible situation for like good work to be done. But I will tell you, and I've said to Karen, that, I mean, every position is looked at every year and we just have to. But we have to do that long-term planning and we did make an investment in this, you know, sort of more choice. And we really want to prepare our students for high school. We really hear that our, that we could do better in middle school and we, we want to. And part of that was just, we can't do that without this flexibility. We just can't. We can't expect kids to go from a ninety-minute sort of block or sort of thirty-minute block to a ninety-minute block at the academy in one lead. It's just, it's too much to ask.
Those positions were in option three that Karen presented.
Yeah, and so to like, when I was looking at Karen's options, like.
So I, hi, I'm Brittany. I have a daughter who's in kindergarten and we have a, a class that's a top class. Um, and so I look at, you know, where we're going to be going. She's going to be in first grade next year and to go from that five to the four and take away paras makes me literally want to vomit because the, the situation that's happening right now in kindergarten isn't enough paras, isn't enough staff support as it is. And it's something that I've been struggling with as a parent of a child who doesn't need those supports, who's now not getting the proper education, um, because of the behavioral situations that are happening that are having to be prioritized. So like, when I see that kind of stuff, you know, it does make me do the big gulp, right? But then I think of like, okay, the extra, you know, maybe the health, health position. Like, does my child necessarily, and don't wrong, she loves health and I, I want to be clear about that. She loves going to the class, but like, if we're having to compare apples and oranges, is her going to a health class, learning about, you know, crossing the street and brushing her teeth and all those things that are important, as important as cutting a, a classroom and cutting paras? Like that's, that's what I was explaining about.
Yeah, these are tough, these are really, really, these are what we're wrestling with. These are really tough, tough positions to be in. And obviously safety has got to be in there more importantly. Like we can't have it unsafe building, can't have it unsafe.
And by the looks of, of taking those paras away, especially in those lower, and I know there's lower numbers and so I'm sure, like, I understand why those got attacked by. But I would, it will be incredibly unsafe to, to have paras be removed from those class, like, and I know Abby can vouch for us. We have, our children are in the same classroom. Um, there are ten kids in our class and we have three adults and it's not enough. So I, I, I do like that, like I said, I, I understand the board definitely has to make some hard decisions, but I hope that's not the decision that you guys choose to make. If it's going to be some cuts, I think it needs to look somewhere else other than that. And maybe it is something like, I mean, I guess best practice, right, is not to buy out-of-state for LED lights. Well, my husband works for an New Hampshire company, he's an electrician, right? Like, people do it, right? Like, uh, his company's out of Woodsville. They go to North Country Hospital.
You should see our electricity bill though. We do need to decrease our electricity bill. There's a trade-off, right?
Absolutely, yeah, we do. But like, is that something that like, okay, well, do we have to purchase it in the state Vermont where we're going to get taxed on different things? Might be a thought for the board to look at, even if it's not quote-unquote best practice. I don't know.
Thank you.
Question, um, Karen, I think you, you, there's a question that I'll add in the overhead cost. Did you have, did you find those numbers and can you? And can you?
Yeah, so. Well, I had the ratios that I was providing. So when you look at, let's see, well, it's pretty easy for principals, right? You have almost 300 kids for every one principal. We have it divided by two. The other ratios that I had was student to classroom teachers. We have 15.6 teachers to one. 15.6 students to one teacher. The U-Arts position, they serve about, there's nine teachers in U-Arts. And they serve 310 students. So they.
Well, that would be twice that would it, because it would be 19, all, they would serve all 600?
Well, we have one for the lower grade and one for the upper grade right now. So they're able to serve half the students. PE teachers, because we have four, they serve 156 students to one. And maybe I didn't have the administrators.
Well, I was thinking, but you also have, we talked about what that looks like compared to other neighboring districts. And that's the, that's what I, the information that I thought was really interesting. Is when we look at what we compared to Linden Town School and to other neighboring districts. What I saw and what I could tease from that data is that we were well within, if not below, the low of those numbers. Because we just have a large school. Like, it looks worse than it is, we just have a large school. So when you have a smaller school, like Luniver, just one of our great teachers. Grumpy about that, that's okay. Great, good for her. That, that's one principal, but that's 100 students. Right, so 56 students, right? Like, I mean, we're actually being, it's basic economics, economic theory of, you know, by having a larger school, we're inherently more, we can be more efficient. So sometimes it sounds, it's just, it's a, it's hard to tell how many students we really have in this building. But there's a lot.
But just to give you an idea, for in the school, we have two principals. We have a dean of students, which is a position that we added through other grant funding. And he is grant funded through FY26, so for a couple of years. We've been able to put him on staff. And, let's see, who else do we have?
I'm also gonna make one comment if you don't mind about the business office. Okay. So this is about business office, the district, okay, please.
Can I just clarify? You said that the dean of students was grant funding. In the annual report, it lists him as a ESAR-funded.
He was ESAR?
Grant is ESAR, ESAR is grant-funded. ESAR is a grant-funded program.
Yes, but that's also a new grant that sustains him for two more years. When ESAR disappears.
Thank you.
He is continuously grant-funded.
That are, my first job on the board was on the finance committee meeting. I was finance committee chair. And I was meeting with our auditors. And, go ahead and look at it. Look at our audit, read our audit report from 2021. It's public, it's a available document. And go to the end of it. And they'll tell you in there, it specifically states, we need more people in our finance office to be fiduciary, to do our job, and to do the job that we have to do, we have to. That is a recommend, that was a recommendation from our auditors. That wasn't just a recommendation from our auditors that we did without like blindly accepting. It was a very, it was incredible need. We were opening ourselves up as a district to immense amount of financial liability. Because we use so many grants, those become liabilities because they have reporting requirements. If we, the money goes out, we spend it. If we don't do the grant reporting necessary, that becomes a liability to the district and we have to find those funds. Because they don't send it to us, they don't give it to us. We're doing a better job. There's a way to use grant funding and to take a little slice of it for administrative costs. We're doing that now, we weren't doing it then. So we're fixing it. But we, I looked at the auditor's report, which is the data that I was given. And we had to, we had to make some changes in our, in the robustness of our finance office. We've done that. We have a wonderful new finance director who has looked at every part of our financial system. Including our software, including our auditors, including our payroll systems, including our HR systems, or HR different, that's actually different, Karen. But we've looked at all of those positions. We're looking at job descriptions. We're looking at, we recently looked at both our payroll and our account, our payroll and accounts receivable positions. And said, you know, this could be a four-day-a-week position. We've gone down to four days a week to save us, you know, a little bit more money. Because we don't want to pay money. So we did increase our capacity in our finance office. I, we did that, I encouraged Karen, I actually begged, if we're gonna be totally honest. So at that point in the evening. I begged Karen to fix it. Because I was really afraid of what was gonna happen if we didn't fix it. And we've made a lot of progress. And we're gonna continue, we'd like to continue to make progress. But I, as the person responsible for having to sit with the auditors, I mean, that's my number one job. I have to look out for the fiduciary responsibility of the district.
I have a chat question.
Great.
Where do we find this, where do we find the audit report? Is it on the website?
It's a very good question. You can get it at district office.
Or email.
Or email, send us an email, send us a, yep. Yeah, we have copies, we have physical copies.
Can we make a digital version available?
Yep, yeah, we could post it on the website.
Did you say we could request that, or you'll put it on the website?
I can put it on the website.
Thank you.
Please.
So, before I go into what I'm gonna say next, I really appreciate the time, especially that Karen spent answering my 50-plus questions that I emailed Friday afternoon. So, thank you for that. And at the risk of being the most hated person in the room after what I'm going to say right now, the hardest part of the past couple of weeks for me personally has been the fear that's surrounded the idea of jobs and people. And the way that sometimes I have at least been approached in a how do I protect myself kind of way. And for us to say that was 450 people, or whatever the number was this time around, and whatever it was the first time around, who voted down our budget, we're still putting ourselves completely first. And I struggle with the idea of listening to people get, you could hear their heartbeat in their voice on town meeting day, talk about property taxes. And I'm not gonna get into the debate about school funding and the state funding system and property taxes. But it's an equal concern as much as someone's job is a concern. And so I feel like we need to acknowledge that it's not our fault, but it's hard right now out there everywhere. I also still have some questions that have gone either unanswered or have been alternatively answered. Why hasn't the board been asked to give up our statements? I know it's a small amount, but it's a symbolic symbol that we are invested in this process.
I don't, hold on. I don't believe I have to show anyone that I'm not invested in this process.
No, no.
And I don't mean to be sharp with you, but it's like.
So let me finish. Thank you. We talk about cutting based on cohort size. But I've asked about data about individual classes. Because as a teacher, cohort size matters. But what if the kids in those grades are really struggling more than other grades? And that information wasn't provided about individual cohorts. When you ask about sectioning and positioning and you talk to different groups of people, you get different answers. And I don't know where the transparency is around that. And I want to believe everybody, because I believe everybody's, like, nobody would lie to me. Everybody's telling some sort of truth. And where, where, where does the truth lie and what I have to make a decision on? And so I, like, I just want to say that I hear us. And I have, I have three children here and one in high school, right? Like, and, and I have children who receive services from special education to having a 504 for two diabetics. You want to talk about taking up the nurse's time? Hello, I'm probably doing a lot of it in my family right now. But I, I think that we, I don't know if I'm at a place with what's been presented to us that I fully believe that we can, we're at a place where we're doing the best job to meet the needs of the people of our community and the people in this building. And I know that's not a question. And I appreciate everybody fiercely and passionately defending and promoting what we need to do for our children, and that needs to be first. But, I like, why, if we have to cut positions, why, could there be a plan? Like, could we reduce the paras in first grade in half? So they spend half the day in a classroom and half the day in the other classroom? And that's not an ideal solution, but does it help meet in the middle? If we're talking about a PE position and a health position, is there, is there any way that a person could still provide some PE support and some health support? And I don't, I don't know what those answers are. And I don't know if anybody would have the information with them to answer all of those questions. And again, I've asked a bajillion questions and everybody's done a wonderful job of answering a lot of them already. And I just wanted to throw that out there.
I have to say publicly, the stipends are $1,200 a year. No, we need to say, we just said publicly we get stipends, so we have to say that they are. Because now that's a question, it's $12 a year, can't have it back, it's not worth it. It's, I.
I don't think it's worth getting defensive over. I think it's.
Driving in our position.
But I think, I think everyone, no matter what it is, I think everyone wants the best for our kids. Wants the best for our town. You know, and I, I agree with, I mean, like, that I think there's so many opportunities to look at. Like, I mean, I came from a smaller school. So like, it is harder for me to, at the bigger school level. But like, growing up, we did, our PE teacher was our health teacher, right? Like, there are opportunities that I agree that could be maybe merged to, to help that. And I don't think anyone's trying to point fingers or try to take things personally.
I have a chat question. What does the data show on the children in alternative placements returning back to public schools? If we pay for those placements, we should really be looking at the success of these programs, right?
It's, it's an excellent question, and we have been working on it for two years. We, we really need to be looking at a program in our community. Where children aren't traveling hours. Because I feel we could do, we feel as a group, we could do a better job educating students and getting those therapeutic services at the same time. Like, we know how to educate, but we need those therapeutic services. And we have been having those conversations monthly with NKHS to see how we can collaborate together, to look at programs right here in our community. Because right now, we're transporting kids hours away and back. It's very costly. Yeah, and we're not, we're not getting a great return. The kids aren't returning, or they're getting kicked out of these programs. Whereas I think if we could make it more personal and be able to understand their needs and wrap those services around them. It is difficult because we don't have a high school, a public high school for the curriculum. But we could definitely do it for elementary school and possibly in a regional area. Even to support like Kingdom East. And also like having Danville, CCSU involved, because they have a high school. And it's funny that this is brought up because Charlotte, Charlotte Hole, yeah, I mentioned to the board in my report, just wrote a grant for over a million dollars to do just this in our community. But it would be a regional program. Bernie Sanders, Senator Sanders had some funding, earmark funding. Really trying to tie in, it'd be great if we could tie in life skills programs. Work with the career centers, you know, the St. John's Berry Academy has a wonderful career center. And I've seen so many kids, as a prior CTE director, I've seen a lot of kids that were struggling with school thrive in the career center. And so, they really have an opportunity to help a lot of students that need that hands-on learning. And there's so many jobs out there for the trades and those, those fields. So, we wrote a grant, it would be down the long term. But short term, we're looking at solutions to keep kids close. You know, we have students right now that have been unenrolled in some of these programs. And they're kind of, we're trying to work with them. But we need to find a short-term solution to help these kids meet the FAP requirement, meet our federal requirements for free education. And also the long term, which might be a regional conversation. Cross our fingers, we can get a million dollars, because that would be a great way to kick it off. But we're gonna, we're piloting now, we're having those conversations now.
My name's Christine Owens, and I am the upper librarian. And I have to admit, I'm a little bit emotional right now. This is all really hard to deal with. I give all of you up there on that stage right now just the most kindness and respect that I possibly could. Because I know you've been through the wringer, you care immensely about this school and the community and everybody that's in it. This is a really difficult position that we are all in. And a position is not just a position, it is a person. And I'm sitting next to the wonderful health teacher right here. Who in, who I sub for last week with the seventh grade. And it was really wonderful that those kids, they, they really wanted health class that day. And they actually went into the library section where there was all kinds of health information. And that they started talking about it and looking at it on their own. That is not something that I've seen inspired from health class, ever. And I don't know, I don't feel like anyone can do that the way that Devin has. So it's not just a health position. I want her to be the one that someday teaches my kindergartner about his changing body. Because that will help me not have to get into the gory details of it all. Every single person in this building cares immensely for the children that they take care of. And every single person plays a huge role. So, cutting even a single position is something that should be heart-wrenching. And it should be something that we look at very closely. Because it is terrifying for so many of us here to know that so many of our colleagues could possibly be on the chopping block. And we have built such a wonderful school and such a wonderful school community. We had over $10,000 sold at the book fair last week. And do you know why? It was because of the parents that were in this building. Over $4,000 in sales was just from credit cards. And that's parents, that's teachers. That's the adults in this community, caring about their kids and what they're reading and what they're doing. I feel like the love is there. People want to take care of their kids. But we get so bogged down with the everyday stuff that just consumes us. And I think if we remind people of that, then they will come out and vote. On Saturday, I spent my Saturday night with 20 adults. Community members, parents, teachers, who wanted to find a way to get a vote to pass without a ton of blood. We understand that people's taxes have gone up. That is not a reality, that cutting a million dollars from this budget is gonna significantly change. It's not. But if we cut programs, if we cut staff, then we are going against the strategic plan and what this school should be doing for our kids. I want that for my kid, and I want him to be in a community that cares and that is stable. And we can do that if we come together and we try. that cares and that is stable. And we can do that if we come together and we try. And we, maybe we haven't tried hard enough, maybe we haven't done it the right way. But I think that there's a lot of people in this room that are willing to do whatever it takes. Thank you.
Middle school isn't explicitly stated in our strategic plan. It's the biggest regret that I have as part of the strategic planning process back then, and to this day. But I, if, it's not, it's not explicitly stated in our strategic plan.
There's an awful lot of discussion about it.
Yeah.
It sort of drove a lot-
It's, it's my biggest regret.
Yeah, yeah, it's really interesting.
It's in, and it's an important document that we're looking at to drive our decisions. And it's something that we spent almost all of our time talking about.
Yeah.
But it's not in there.
I think we put it under excellence is really where it got teased out.
When we wrote that strategic plan, we surveyed the middle school students to find out what they need and how their school education is going. And I will never forget some of the quotes that we had to read in that meeting. They were heartbreaking. Students talking about how they wish their bodies could be different or better. They want, they want to be in better shape, but they don't know how. They want to know how to be healthy. They're talking about bullying. I almost wish I could unhear some of those things. It was, it was painful and hard to hear. So that's, when we talk about these URS positions and why we put them there with SRF money, that's why.
Okay.
I am, at the risk of repeating some of what my wife already said, I, my name's Liz Laverty. We have three kids here, two in third grade and one in sixth. She's taller than me, so it's hard to know sometimes how old she is. And I, we are at this weird place, like you guys talk about all these other places, you don't have a say in what gets cut or what happens. And here we are, like, you don't get to vote for this, but we do vote with our dollars. And I don't mean to in any way suggest that I'm like, ready. I'm not in any way doing that. Because like, we adore the St. J school. There are certainly issues with it, but there are issues with almost every school around here. And I will say that when we were deciding where to send our first kid to, we visited every other school, because everybody told us, well, you can go anywhere. You should go to this school. You should, you're going to go to the St. J school? No, sorry. That's what people said. They like, why would you go there? But my kids have health and scheme and art and music and band and chorus and library and PE. And the only reasons some days that they get out of bed is for those classes, right? And my kids are like, pretty well-supported at home. And I know that there are lots of kids for whom PE is the only reason they're coming to school, right? Art is the only reason they're coming to school. Band is the only reason they're coming to school. And it would just break my heart, frankly, to think that like, four pennies on the, on the thing would be the difference between our kids having those opportunities and not. So, you know, maybe long-term, you could just start selling yourselves better and more curvy people come over.
I am, I am working on that. I used to be your superintendent when I was at Essex North, so the letter's written to all the families in Kirby's, so I am going to be sent. You'll get something in the mail.
We have talked about that, because there's another side of this, revenue, right? We can, we can create revenue too. And we could use a few more students in our building. We would love a few more students in our building. Like, we can, we can do it. We're ready. Bring them here. We're ready to love on them. And that's one of the next steps, is looking at that revenue, those revenue lines is another opportunity for growth. Like, looking at the budget, I think, bringing our special ed closer to home for our therapy programs, and then seeing what we can do to be attractive to bringing a few more. Again, it's economies of scale. You know, we just, we're able to break down the cost for everyone without sacrificing a lot of quality or, you know.
I have something to say. I didn't plan on speaking, so it's not well-organized. But first, I just, I do want to thank the board, Karen. I know that all of you put so much work into understanding our school budget and our, how we operate. And I don't have the faintest clue about how we operate, just so you know. But I also want to say that I have seen a lot of growth, particularly in the last year, okay? Because I'm a problem solver and a critical thinker like you. I think a lot about how we could grow. And I have said more than one time this year, there has been so much growth in terms of the culture in this school. When I walk through the hallways, I feel happy and safe in comparison to just last year, okay? So I think that we need to acknowledge the changes that we made in just one year. I feel like more students are getting their needs met this year in comparison to years in the past. And I think that we've been more thoughtful about how to do that because we are data-driven, or in the process. We are not there yet. I would like to say that, well, our structures, structures and systems are being built, and I think that there's a lot of hope for what that can be in the future. And we may not need some positions in a year from now, because we'll have an understanding of the multi-tiered system of supports model, and we won't need to fund some of those larger positions. I also agree with Gretchen that we needed more communication. People who I know in the community didn't vote in the last, uh, budget vote, because they didn't know about it, and, and that is sad. And I too will be working to support getting more people out to vote. I also would like to acknowledge what Eileen had to say, because I think that what you're trying to say, Eileen, is that we need to be creative about our cuts. And you're trying to think about that creatively. And, and it's hard to understand everything that's happening. And you're asking lots of questions to have a more transparency. And I, I wondered about that myself. Like, what, what is it exactly that that person is doing? How is it going to impact our school? And I think we, I don't want to have any blood on the chopping block, but I do think that we have to think about who's actually making impact with students directly. And, you know what I mean? And I, I, I think that we just have to think about that, because either way, it sounds like we have to make a cut. My, I think the least impacted would be the best. But we're here because we're in this position. And so I, I think that people should feel safe to ask these kinds of questions, so that we can come up with the best option. And I say that because I, I've been here 20 years. And I've been, I've had my salary frozen before. I've had to work with a very middle-class room budget. And I am the teacher who goes around in the fall and spring, and you all laugh at this, but I'm collecting materials from the hallway and delivering them to people because I care about not wasting, I care about the environment, and I care about the school. And so I think we just, I, I'm just saying this as, I don't know the answers, but, you know, I'm like the old lady who went through the Cold War or what, or the World War II. I've been in the place where you have to-
You look great for this.
Where you have to like, you know, don't throw away your food scraps, save it till the last minute. And I, and I think that we have to have, put those glasses on too, because this is the norm.
Yeah.
And so how can we bridge the gap between having all this beautifulness that we have and the growth and what I feel is beautiful right now, and a forward trajectory, but also not forget that we, we can't, yeah, I think that's what you're trying to say, Eileen. And so it's both. And I don't know the answers, and I really appreciate all of you working so hard on all of it, because I took so many notes and I thought, wow, I don't understand any of this. Okay, so thank you. Thank you all so much for all your work.
We definitely, you know, we want the last question. Please, Cindy.
Hi, everyone. I'm Cindy Robler. I live way down the street. And I have two children who go to St. John's Berry School. I actually, not the school, but the school that looked like it was at one point. Mine's a very small part of it. I, one of my, one of the things I wonder if it would help voters, this is for me, it's really complex, but, and we don't have Scott here anymore, so we're at a loss for some input. But I wonder if we could do better and explain the, the challenges of the system, like the state-level challenges. And I think we need to really think about our elected officials and the work that we can do in that space, because, you know, Karen mentioned whatever can be done between now and the end of the legislative session, which I think is zero. And so we have to, you know, we have to look forward, look ahead to next year and really, I don't know, but I don't know the answer. It's so complex that I, you know, I look at the report and the dollars and where they all come from, but it seems like this five cents that we could save for ourselves here on every tax rate. The bigger picture is this state-level issue. And so I'm just, I don't know what the answer is. I don't expect anybody to know what it is here. But I just want to really be public in my concern that that's really where I think a lot of our energy needs to go. And I'd be happy to empower some kind of conversation about that, because I do think that it's unfair to a community like St. John's Berry, it's happening well around the state, that we're in this position because we have a really big education system. So I know you all know that, but I just think it's really important to raise that as a big topic.
Thank you for doing that. I really appreciate it.
Something, you know, and I, I love hearing from all, like, you know, we have such a big community here that is, you know, very much pro, and I am too. But I think the bigger problem is, is not the people that are here. I think the bigger problem is the people that aren't here.
Yeah.
And so I think of people like my in-laws, who have lots of property in this town, pay lots of taxes in this town, and they're not getting to see all the things. Is there a way, and I don't know if this is a board thing, if this is a teacher thing, if it's, maybe it's a bulk thing, that before this next vote, that we could show the taxpayers of like, why? Like, why this is so important? Because unfortunately, and I'm the first to say I'm not a good representative, because I've had a lot of challenge, you know, because unfortunately, my daughter, I shouldn't say unfortunate, fortunately, my daughter is not in a situation where she needs to be on an IEP or a 504 or any of that. But we're struggling with the other end of things, of where like, her needs aren't being met because of those struggles. So what do I do? I go, I go home and I, I'm talking to my in-laws who are taxpayers, and I'm hearing these negative things, right? They don't get to hear all the positive things, because that's just who we are as human beings, right? We don't always, you know, highlight all the positive things. You know, she's a kindergartner, and we don't, we don't have spring concerts and winter concerts and things for them to come and see. So it's really easy for people like them to just be like, oh, this is simple. No. So is there something that like, as a board or as a school community, that we could do to help show taxpayers like my in-laws of like, why it's so important? Like, I feel like it's just really hard to, for them when they're not seeing the, the big changes, right? Like, they're not the ones walking through the hallway and feeling these things, right? They're seeing that we continue to be a Title I school. They're continually seeing need, being frustrated with a system that is just a tough system right now, you know, versus seeing those positive things. Because what I'm hearing is, they, no one really wants you guys to necessarily do a, a big thing. We don't want the million dollars out, right? It's not going to make a huge difference to the taxes, but it's going to make a huge difference to kids like my kids, right? And we want this vote to pass, and it sounds like we don't really want a whole lot of change, but it's not these people that are making the difference, right? There's not 600 people in here. So we got to do something. And I, like I said, I don't have an answer, and I hate coming with a problem without having an answer for you guys, of like, what, how can we show these taxpayers that people that had those SRF funds are making this difference? Or that the, the extra, the fourth PE teacher, why they're making the difference? Or, I mean, like I said, I, I've told them over and over and over again, because especially I took the pictures of Karen's slideshow, and I'm going to show them that like, holy moly, if we lose a pair up in the first grade, like, I don't know what I'm going to do. But is there anything that, I mean, and like I said, this is kind of an open question that we can do in the next few days that is going to show the taxpayers that are showing up and keep saying no?
It's a very good question. You know, I don't have a match of sauce. I don't. We can talk about it. We're going to keep trying. You know, I'm an organizer at heart, so I did in my twenties and thirties. But, but I'm not, I'm not 2020 anymore. And I don't have 16 hours to spend anymore. I have three children and a career, and so does everybody else. And Karen has a school to run. And so it's going to just have to be an ongoing discussion. You know, and this is not to make anyone feel guilty, but we had four open sessions. We baked homemade cookies, right? Like, I don't know what else to do. We're not hiding anything. There's no conspiracy. I have no time for conspiracy. I promise you. And I don't want to shut any hard questions down. I want the tough questions. So, I mean, I don't have an answer, but I'm not going to stop trying. It's, it's as personal for me as it is for you. I promise you that.
I mean, I think, like, I, like, I'm going to pick on you, Peter. You know, like, I've seen Peter being really open about it on social media. I think that's been really huge, that people are getting to see the Xs and Os, because, I mean, we're all guilty of not being at every meeting, right? And not being able to make those open forums. And I don't know if it's like, you know, again, people like my in-laws, I'm picking on them, they're the people that are pumping up the newspaper. Like, is it something, maybe we can even put things into the newspaper of like, what is the, I don't know.
We're going to do it all. We're going to do it all. I understand there's other people who want to do some stuff out there. And we're going to keep trying. We have no choice. Like, we have to pay for a school, right? Like, ask to pay for a school. There is no way. There are fixed costs we cannot control. They are going to increase people's taxes. I want to be as creative as I can be. We're trying. We're going to continue to be. We're going to continue to ask the questions. Please.
I'm just wondering, get back to what you were saying. So like, so we know all these people here are feeling supportive. And so is there a way, like, this isn't, I don't want to like, put another thing on the floor, like, I think that there's some energy here potentially, that if we could all connect and take on some of this planning and, and, you know, potentially, I know that Lynn Wersberg talked about, we've been setting up a table outside of White's one year and, you know, getting, getting this school board to pass. You're getting information out of people not even knowing when this is going to pass. So I don't know if that's something that we need, like, do we put a piece of paper on the table over there? People put their email on it? Or this could be something on our school website? Like, what? Any suggestions?
So the people would be there and discuss. And I also say, we've, we've gone to all of our other partners. We've gone to the other people in our educational community and asked them what questions they needed to answer, so they'd support us. We've tried. We've gone to them. We're reaching out to them to try to get their support. And we're at, we're at, we're giving countless hours to try to put, to answer any question that they have. But it hasn't, hasn't gotten us to where we need to be. Please.
I'm Alexis. I live in St. John's Berry, and I don't have children who live at this school currently, but I do have sort of a personal statement that I have to make up. I think I've worked in places where school boards have gotten into like, gotten into this really contentious place with communities around school. Like, I've worked in the habit for a couple of years. And anybody who remembers what happened there, like, you know, their school budget just basically got decimated. We got like, this close to having to borrow 87% and not even pass our budget. And I feel like everything that everyone's saying is correct, right? Like, everything, everyone's saying here is valid. There are wonderful things happening. And as Abby keeps saying, it doesn't matter what we're going to say, right? Like, in much ways- Like, in much ways, because the people in this room who support the school are going to organize for it. I'm, I'm very concerned with the idea that we're going to put the same budget back on the people, because people are going to organize against it. And I know that, you know, we haven't, that there's not really a special about that, that there's no options, but I just, I, I feel in the community that people are riled up about this, and I'm, I'm concerned with the idea that we can just sort of like, educate people out of it. I wish that was the case. I wish that we could educate people and have to say, these are the things we need to, we need you to know, so you can understand why this is happening. I think unfortunately, in some ways, that's just not going to matter to a lot of them. They don't have kids in this school, and they are, and they're older and they're paying taxes, they're, they're struggling with paying for their basic necessities. There's so many things going on that we all know, economically, we're in a really challenging place, and as much as we don't like to think about it, like, some of these people just aren't interested in how the school runs or not. And so, I just, I want to pass the school budget, and I think that one of the things that's going to have to happen is that the messaging around what we're doing has to stop being, if you don't support the school budget, you pay kids.
Nobody said that.
I know nobody's actually saying that, but I see a lot of rhetoric around like, you know, if you support kids, come vote for the school budget. And I understand what that means. I understand what that means, but I don't know that that's the, the message that's getting put across. The message that's coming across is, if you don't vote for this budget, then, you know, in some ways, you just like, don't care about our kids. And so, I just feel like the messaging around this, so we, we understand that people are struggling. We understand that this is really challenging. We understand that, you know, all of these things are happening, and people feel really challenged about them. I think I can probably say it the best, but that, you know, we want to work with the community to pass a budget that, that makes sense. I understand it's going to make absolutely no difference in our taxes, right? Like, that, that, and that feels wrong to us. We also have to pass a vote. We have to pass a budget. And so, I just, I want that to be part of the conversation of, what is the message going out to the community, and how do we get them on our side? And I, I, I don't think it's going to be through trying to hold educational forums. And I, I went to them, right? Like, I.
Yep. And we answered every tough question that you asked, right? And like, and you were the only one. And you were the only one.
It was a beautiful experience, and I'm so glad that I did it, and I got a lot of questions answered. But I know that people aren't going to those, and so, I, I just, I, I feel like they need to sort of come around the other side of, this is messy, and it's terrible, and it's, it's heartbreaking, and we have to pass a budget. So, how do you convince people? And it's by like, like, what is the sacrificial offer? If we say, like, look, we hear you, these are the cuts we're making to try and support you, does that, you know, does that appease the people who are going to come out? I don't know what, what the next vote will look like, but I just would be very concerned about not demonstrating that, that the people who came out to go against it would be, or because I think that is a huge part of the rhetoric around this right now.
Try to start all my communications with that. I really do. If you read my letter to the editor that I published the day of the vote, I think that's the very first thing that I said. And I talked about what we have done as a school to make a difference in the lives of the people who are struggling. I, again, I don't have, I failed, so probably not going to ask. It's, I've been feeling, in terms of getting a budget, it's not, I'm not trying to be defensive. I'm being real. Like, I don't have this figured out. I don't. Doing the best I can. So, we have to make a decision, or we don't. We have to at least decide to proceed. I wanted to give one word. I heard this thing in education called the pause. I'm not very good at it. I heard it's really important. Does anyone else have any questions? Anyone else on the board have any questions?
I can probably ask, but I, I guess the question I would ask is, if I don't have questions, what are you about to ask of me in terms of a vote, or what's, what's happening right now?
Very, very, very good question.
So, what do I need to be clear on before I have a perspective, Abby?
Okay. Very good question. And I, so I have to make a proposal?
I don't know. I, I mean, that's why I'm asking.
That feels.
I've seen a menu of options, and I can ask a lot of questions about more of those options, but I mean, or, is one of us to generate, like, I have ten questions to come up with a proposal, but I would have to, or others.
I don't feel like, I don't feel this is the right forum to be creative. It's, we've been at it for six, we've been already at it for two hours. I was very clear. We have a significant problem in terms of getting some stability to our staff. So, that's, that's where, that's where we're at. We want to provide stability to our staff desperately. That's why we voted the day after the eclipse. Again, I'll take responsibility for that. It's because our teacher contracts do, it's trying to be the fiduciary person that I try to be. I was trying to do the right thing.
I mean, I have some questions that may actually be so specific that I don't, that that's really why I'm looking to you right now, in terms of like, the lines between public and non-public.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to take an informal poll of the board. I'd like you to tell me whether or not you're ready to make a decision. If you can feel like you need to ask more questions to make a decision, that means you're ready to make a decision tonight. This is very difficult, so please be aware of me. Okay. No, I, that's why I'm trying to figure it out.
So, Tom's been here before, right? Tom's our most experienced board member. In these, unfortunately, Tom has done this before.
Yes, I have.
In these scenarios, does the board typically go into executive session to discuss these personnel matters?
Yeah, that's my recollection of how we've been in the past.
I would favor that.
I'm happy to ask some questions in public, but I know some of them may cross that line, and I don't exactly know where the line is. So, that's why I'm looking to you all to tell me. But I do have some questions that I would happily raise publicly. I just didn't want it to seem like that was all I needed to do.
Okay. Sure.
I just, I also want to ask like, a general timeline question. You've mentioned a couple of times teachers' contracts.
Yep.
Right? When is a realistic, and when is kind of the necessary time?
The necessary time is the 15th. We've missed it today. Today.
Okay. So, what's the new?
They gave us a week. They, the union, because it's a union we deal with, so we have to, so we have, yeah. They gave us a week. The, the union gave us a week instead.
Right. So, it's questions right now on what to do next.
Till Friday. Sorry. It was a week at the time, till Friday.
Till Friday. Okay. That's my question. We're not going to have a vote before Friday.
Correct. We are not.
So, my question then becomes, what's the, what's the timeline for you to make a decision on an extra poll? It's not going to happen before Friday. So, is it next week? Is it next month?
Yeah. Do you want me to speak to the timeline? Do you?
That's, that's one. That's a question.
So, I mean, from, from a timeline perspective, there are a couple of components to this. One of them is certainly an imminent spring break period, which is a chunk of time when many people in this room who are speaking of mobilizing and participating would be less available or gone. And we, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to warn a revote, and on a revote, it's a seven-day warning, but obviously, seven days is nearly a possible timeline to actually operationalize a vote. So, we have been given some grace by the union, which bought us from today till Friday to distribute information, but no, we will not have, no matter what we decide tonight on a new budget number, that we choose to warn with a new date, we will not have a verdict on that vote before we distribute contracts on Friday.
So, to me, that buys you some time to ask the tough questions, to be, to be creative, to come up with a solution that will pass a vote. You're not in a time crunch to get it done, warn tomorrow. You have a little bit of time to put some more thought into it.
I mean, I certainly, I think that's true, if I can speak personally in response to that. I've heard a lot, I've looked a lot of people in the eyes in this building, last week and this week, who every day without more information is really, really challenging for. So, I, I, I am feeling that personally, and would like to be answering the questions the best that we can about some of those hypotheticals much sooner than Friday. So, I'm willing, that's why I'm asking about what questions I should ask and what the forum should be, because I, I'm willing to sit here to ask them to get to something more final tonight. I just don't know the lines for that. But I think there's a communications component. I think Friday seems too late for some of that. That's what I've heard.
I have questions about the executive session that I'm holding over right now, because we were, you know, we want to be transparent, like, it's not, but I don't think when boards go into executive session, it's to not be transparent. I think it's to discuss sensitive matters that have to do with personnel, and, and these are positions, but these, this isn't a school where we have 17 teachers of a certain thing, so therefore, it's easily and readily identifiable as a person. And I don't think it's a lack of transparency. I think it's respect for the people who are in these positions that are easily identifiable.
And I would be happy to report back and summarize. I just don't, yeah, have questions.
Well, we, so there's very, you know, this is, we've opened meeting law, right? This is just, this is, there's very specific parameters around how I can conduct these meetings. There's a question. What do you think? There's a question. Okay.
Hi. Over in the Capitol, I teach eighth grade year, and I have two children, one in eighth and one in second, and a student at the academy junior. So, I first want to say that anything I'm about to say is, comes from experience of living here for 16 years, and my ex-husband being a resident here his entire life, and also having not sent my children here for many years, and kind of having, they were in public, a private school for a while, so I kind of have maybe a toe in both waters. But I remember, was it 2012, when the budget didn't pass, and then it didn't pass again? And I'm fearful, echoing the concern I have over there, that if we don't show the voters that we're making a good faith effort, that there may be an outcry, a public outcry. And I know that, that saying that impacts friends of mine that are sitting here, and people that I work with that I so appreciate and know that my own children benefit from. But I also see the complexity of this, that this isn't about people, it's about, you know, the people that are voting against the budget, it's not about people for them, it's about whether they can afford to live in their homes. And unfortunately, Vermont is quickly becoming a place that's unaffordable for many of our residents, and that's devastating, because many of us, we all know that we live here for a reason. So, I guess where I'm leaning to this question is, worst-case scenario, when we make minimal cuts that first year, what happens if it doesn't pass and contracts have been issued? What do we do then?
Well, we, I mean, we, yeah, I mean, we, we're going to, we, it's going to be a tough situation. We're going to, we have, we theoretically, maybe could do one more.
Maybe. But, I mean, that's a specific question about issued contracts, not about.
Once you issue a contract, we're committed.
What's that?
Once we're issued, you know, an employee's issued a contract, we're committed. That, that was kind of the urgency around why we need to discuss that last Thursday, knowing contracts were due Monday, you know, are we handing out contracts?
So, if we're required to cut a certain amount because our budget doesn't pass by the state's mandate, you know, what, how does that, I can't even conceptualize what that might look like, and I don't know if the board can help me understand what that was like.
It's 87%, off on this year's budget.
Right.
And as you look at, and of course, the, those fixed costs have changed.
I know the number, but what does that look like? I mean, because we have, it, the, the contracts that are there, so where do those cuts come from?
It's as big a problem as the budget itself. It is a huge problem. If we have those contracts issued, we cannot cut them. We have to cut everything else around those positions. It would be devastating. And it's a huge risk. We have to figure out how to work that, but it all plays in together with the budget.
So, I mean, and the concrete numbers on that, based on last year's budget, if we were to reach that July 1st cliff, which allows us to borrow 87% of last year's, it's a $22.743 million budget that we would be operating against, which is cutting seven and a quarter million dollars from the budget that we just put up. It would be non-functional.
That's staggering to me, to think about something like that, and where that money would come from, and how, I mean, absolutely catastrophic that would be. And so, that's my concern when we think about cuts. Are we showing good faith? I love the idea of mobilizing, I'm a grassroots person myself, but are those numbers out there? Are we, are we absolutely convinced they are? And if not, I mean, that's a lot to chew on, because if we don't make a good faith effort, and the taxpayers kind of, the ones that are voting against the budget rally and say, they, they give us two budgets that they really cut that much, then we're facing the catastrophic drop, which is untenable.
We did cut $500,000 last time.
Yeah.
And we're making good faith effort now. And I'm not saying, I, I really hear you, and I, I'm struggling with this too. This is my community. I grew up here.
I, I'm not interested in a conver, like a, you know, like an argument. I'm just proposing, posing a taxpayer and a, a teacher's perspective.
Thanks for bringing it up. It's hard to understand some of those nuances, so I appreciate, just by you asking the question, it kind of helps us explain to other people.
Thank you.
Can I also ask, though, I, there are, in the neighboring communities, students, teachers were issued contracts without budgets passing, and so, I say that as someone who got a contract, even if our budget didn't pass. And so, I think about, if I were a teacher here, I'd be looking elsewhere. So, like, I'm worried that good teachers here are going to look at the neighboring communities where they're, where they are, giving out contracts, and saying, well, I'm going to go to a place where they're going to give me a contract regardless of what happens, because at the end of the day, I have to feed my family. And so, I'm just worried about what that, like, I don't know if it's a lot of the other districts, or if it just happens to be my district, or, but I'd be interested to know how that would impact the staffing, what people whose jobs are on the line would do. And I'm not, I'm just posing that as a thought.
It, it is very critical to get contracts out of staff, because we don't want to lose them. And it's not to push the board to make decisions, but we're kind of pushing the board to, to make a decision as soon as possible, because there are jobs everywhere, and we, we don't want to lose staff. And, and they have, some districts, I have reached out to many districts, Kingdom East, I don't know if that's where you're working from.
It is.
They handed out before their vote, you know, they figured, maybe they could cut in other places to make up that difference. We just don't have that luxury of having $7 million to make up that difference. South Burlington, I have South Burlington, because they're spaled. They, they would find other ways to make that up. We don't have that extra anywhere to make up that $7 million, so that's why it's real, it's.
For this particular problem, the bigger you are, the better, because you're going to lose teachers just naturally through attrition and such, to retirement. So, if you have contacts that are signed, you can shuffle people around easier in a bigger district.
There is a, there's a component to this that certainly hearkens back to what Karen opened with early on in the presentation around, you know, we, we do not have a list of teachers who we pay who are teaching high school, right? And I, that, that's not any negative comments about it, but if you look at the pool of people where we would be distributing any sort of reductions, it's a, it's a smaller pool, even though we support all of those students. And so, that very same issue comes up with contract distribution, and, you know, the, the risk, and Karen, I don't, this did come up on the meeting last week, so I'll raise it here again, because I think it's very relevant to what you were. week, so I'll raise it here again because I think it's very relevant to what you were saying. But essentially, any contract that we distribute without a certainty of funding is some amount of risk. And there certainly has been conversation about what the budget number will look like that we will warn. And I believe I have come to understand that there is another dimension to that decision-making around potentially holding other contracts because God forbid, whatever we do next doesn't pass. And those are also really challenging decisions that I have a lot of questions about, but that's certainly another thread that has come up.
I have a question. If certain positions are cut, is that to say that students won't be receiving those classes?
Yeah. Yeah.
Right? Like, I would like somebody to provide some guidance, right? Like, would things stop at a certain grade or would people be asked to do things differently? I, I would, I think I'd need that answer to make a choice. And I'm trying to ask it in a way that's...
Yes, Jeremy, please.
Okay, thank you. So STEAM, yes, we don't have another option of providing STEAM. So if the STEAM position is eliminated, then students wouldn't have access to a STEAM class as it is right now. We would have to look at other ways to integrate that into our science curriculum or other opportunities that we haven't had time to think about at this point. We have two health teachers. It's a huge ask for a health teacher to teach students from kindergarten through eighth grade. And we know the health curriculum spirals quickly into more complicated topics as students get older. Having two health teachers has allowed us to put way more energy and effort, as Evan has put, has created a curriculum for the, for the older grades that is an opportunity we have not been able to provide our older students for a long time. So we would not, not be able to provide help, but we would be able to provide help to the same degree we do right now. These would be asked in one person who's a covered in higher school. We have three other PE teachers who would just have to look back at, we would have to change our unified art structure to the traditional model that we've used in years past where we needed to rely on health, on unified art teachers who span the entire school instead of just the upper and the lower, meaning it just becomes a integrated unified arts schedule that requires the middle school and the lower school, or the upper school and the lower school to rely on each other. It doesn't allow us to separate the two, have two separate schedules.
It also dictates what the size of instructional blocks we're able to offer at a given point. So instead of having, building a schedule based on instructional blocks of like 90 minutes for literacy and 60 minutes for math, we'd have to base it off of the UARS, the ability or the options of classes for UARS, which is not an ideal way to design a schedule. But yes, having three PE teachers does allow every grade to have two PE classes a week, which is legally required, but it will limit instruction in other content areas.
Okay, it seems to be the consensus of the board that they'd like an executive session, that we would like an executive session to discuss personnel. Unless there are any members of the public that'd like to address this further, I'd like to make a motion that we enter executive session to discuss personnel. I'm, sorry, I didn't give the chance. I didn't want to actually say anything more.
Will, will reduction in force be discussed as a part of that executive session?
I'm sorry, Carl, can you repeat that? I didn't hear you.
Will the reduction in force be discussed as a part of that executive session?
I don't think it can.
You're saying, so you're not going to be considering any of the reduction in force proposals that were presented today?
This is what's up, the conversation.
I think the answer is yes, Carl.
Yes. So then I'm wondering if the association should be credited to this executive session given Article 12.4 of the master agreement.
I don't know what that section is.
Section 12.4 is, in the event of a proposed reduction in force, the association after notification shall have the opportunity to discuss proposed reduction, but the superintendent and the school will make recommendations.
Would you mind sticking around so you can join us for executive session at a certain time?
Also, I think they're making questions and not a proposal, either initially, so.
Please.
Yeah, I'm Remy. I'm a fifth grade math teacher hired in the past couple of years. I know that you guys are working hard on this and I don't have answers either, but I know that if the cuts get made here, then I'm going to, and other people will be lower on the totem pole for next year's, like, potential cuts. So like, what are we doing to make those teachers feel comfortable, like, this year, knowing that there could be cutbacks?
We, we don't believe we'll be in the same situation. It's hard to say though, because they are making changes again in the funding formula. But on the existing funding formula, the weighted pupils is a two-year average, and so we're only reaping the benefit of the first year, which it gives us more funding to support the educational needs in the school. And I, we won't have those ESER, this kind of ESER cliff either that we're experiencing now. So if we can get through this year, I don't believe we'll have the same impact. Things could change, you know, legislatively. Needs could change significantly. We can't predict that, but I, I think this is just what we're feeling statewide. You know, the state has used funds, they've been offsetting reserves with reserves for several years as well, and we have done the same with the ESER.
Please.
Sorry, I, I, can I just say one more thing about the taxes? I keep looking at this page 18 where if I say, there, no, again, a little Kirby, my taxes are different, but I think it's really important...
Sir, which document, page 18?
The book.
That one? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Yeah, so I'm on page 18 here and it looks like the CLA, the estimated tax due to CLA is, let's say, 2025 versus 2024. It's going from 597 to 1470. The district tax, 2024 to 2025, is going from 3694 to 3878. I think that any reduction in budget and proposal of that needs to come with a, if your house is worth $300,000, this is gonna reduce your taxes by tax. I think we need to be really clear about that. People are seeing their taxes go up and that is painful, but it's not the school budget percentage-wise.
That's the challenge.
And that, we need to be really clear about that because it does suck, but it, it's not this. And voting the school budget down, when we reach that 87% cliff thing, even if we do that, what's that gonna reduce people's taxes by? But then more, it's gonna be more than they're paying. So I think we really need to be clear, be sympathetic to people's tax problem. It is a problem. This isn't the problem. And I hope that as you look at cuts, will you please just do a little back in the end of math on what's it gonna do to people's taxes? Because I agree that we should go out in the community and talk about what one of the things we're doing at the school and how great it is, but the other side of that is like, if you move this down, what, you can save like $200? So I think that should be part of that.
Can I say something? My name is Devon Pashman. I am the upper school health teacher in question. And it's really easy to look at this and think, ah, I'm only here because I care about my job and I don't. I care so much about the subject and about the impact that I know I'm having on the kids with this class. And it is horrifying to me to think, I teach four of your kids right now, you know? That the kids are not gonna get all of these classes. And that if you say that they don't matter and we can cut them, the people out in the community who already don't understand, how are they ever gonna think it's important in the future?
Yeah, we don't want to get a single job. And I know everyone in this room knows that. We want to cut zero jobs and we've already cut one job. I think that's getting lost a little bit too. We've cut one district job unfortunately, one person has lost their job, so. I know everyone here knows that, but it's not easy for us.
Okay, so I do think we're gonna, please, hi Andrew.
Andrew, just a process question. Do you intend to return from the executive session and resume open meeting? And in terms of the longer timeline, do you envision approving a budget request tonight and setting a date for a vote, or is this something that you see happening in such a community?
We, we, second question again, it's for you right there. That's the, and yes, we will return. We will return and take no action and announce that, or we will take an action when we return. But we will do that. And there very well may be further discussion, because I'm gonna try to be really, I'm gonna try to be really careful that we really stay within the parameters of open meeting law. I really believe in that, both process-wise and legally, I just don't want to get us in opposition. So I'm gonna be really tight on what we actually can discuss and so there very well may be further questions when we come out of open session. I do not. I'm sorry.
I mean, we have the rest of our meeting we have to finish. We have action items still here.
Yep.
We have to come back.
Yep. So I'm making a vote, yes, I made, so I'd like to make a motion that we enter executive session to discuss personnel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can we invite the superintendent? Maybe the principles at our finance secretary?
Then we're... Let's invite our superintendent and our, hey Carl. As pursuant to our master agreement with our union. And Karen, I'm, I'm sorry, what?
I think Carl will stand by. We don't have anything to get up at this point.
Okay. All right. Well, we're gonna, um...
Who are we inviting?
Karen.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that clarified before we leave. Thank you.
Okay, it's 9:04. We have exited executive session. We took no action during the executive session. We're going to come back to our regularly scheduled programming. Got some levity in this situation. Okay, so I'm just gonna go back to our original agenda, so I gotta go back to very, back to some structure here. Make myself feel good. Okay, where's my agenda? Somewhere like that. Now that we have answered the, or we've had some discussions around specific personnels, are any other additional questions that the board would like to ask before we make any proposals?
I guess I have one or two.
Okay, great.
Karen, in the minimal impact on students list, can you just give me a little bit more sense of, I realize this is a small number, but the supply is component of that, like, what I heard you say, I think was, we're cutting this out of a local budget and we believe we can cover it with like, ESER funds. But I would like to really confirm that we're not talking about a situation where people are gonna start paying for stuff out of their pockets.
It was reducing classroom teacher budgets from $1,000 to $600.
And is that a number, are those numbers we've used in the past that we know, like, I just really mean that, I don't, I'm not gonna ask people to, that's such a minor number that it feels not worth cutting? So I want to understand what that is or from the teacher's perspective, the implications of that.
And I don't know, Jeremy, if you want to speak to that?
What has it been? Is that what it's been or is that going...
There was $400 in the past and...
And we bumped it up?
And we bumped it up to $1,000 when we quit halfway.
Okay, so that would be $200 more than it is this year still, if we had it...
Previously, it, I don't know when it was, three years ago? It was $400?
So our budget has fluctuated over the years. We used to have, I mean, more than $1,000.
Yep.
It would drop lower to the 400 and then a separate pool of money was created that has become sort of what the principals' accounts are.
Okay.
Which was the supply money in one spot where we were able to use it, previous administrations created this, where they were able to use it for more specific things instead of just general classroom needs. We downsized that, increased individual classroom supply budgets two years ago, three years ago, around there, to what it is now. So, so it would be decreasing from $1,000 back down to $600. We still have access to some, so we've also cut our principals' fund, so there will be less supplies available in general.
Yeah.
Less money flies, but there is still also some additional money to supply.
Okay. I have other questions, sorry.
Yeah, please.
Before, are we gonna stay on this, this slide?
I have some questions about the number two section.
Before we have the...
Yeah, number one, the minimal impact section.
Yeah, the door locks. Can you explain that to me? Because I, I thought I heard two different things and so now I don't know what it was. And I just want to make sure a safety concern is not a part of this section. Not that you guys would put this in.
No, no. It was identified as a safety concern and we had estimated $100,000 to do all of the locks. A quote came in for $60,000.
Okay.
And so we were able to decrease what was originally in the budget by 40.
Thank you.
And that's still in the budget, the locks at $60,000?
Yes.
Okay. And then we already discussed the whole light bulb sourcing question. From the second section, let's just say that I'm looking at the cohort numbers and I don't want to make an assumption, but if we are changing anything about the number of classroom teachers that we have based on cohorts, I presume then of course, those changes to the numbers of teachers in a grade would have to follow the cohorts, right? So I'm looking at fifth and sixth grade thinking in a year, that will be seventh and eighth grade. And so is that, would that be the plan or would we be hoping to add those positions back? Or what, if we cut those, what would you be expecting us to do next year? What's the thought?
It would be based on, well, it's different licensure too.
That's why I was gonna ask about the eighth and ninth grade licensure, yeah.
And I think Jeremy can get really creative with our offerings when I get to those groupings, so it may, you may have only impacting, you know, sixth and seventh next year, no, seventh and eighth.
Okay. I mean, I just think that's an important trajectory and sustainability in all of this is definitely on my mind, so I wondered if you guys had...
Yeah. Okay, you asked him to that. So I think what I heard you ask in Congress was that this year it would be fifth and sixth would have one less.
Small, they're quite a bit smaller, yeah.
Which in theory would meant next year would be six and seven.
Correct.
And then seventh and eighth.
Yes.
I think there's some logic to that, that provided those cohorts don't change size over the years.
Right.
It may very well be the case.
Right.
I think the only caveat that would be that when we get to eighth grade, we tend to get between 10 and 20 movements, which significantly changes the class size.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they need to rethink that.
Yeah.
I think probably not for this conversation, but I would certainly, for my perspective, advocate that we find our way back to a more person team structure in the future when we're in a different situation.
If in fact we make those.
That structure we really committed ourselves to and have based our, our construction around that model.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions about one, two, and three.
Can I ask a question? Earlier tonight, I asked a question about, in particular, for, for an example, the reducing the four first grade classroom paraprofessionals. If we voted on a number, and does that mean that we are saying exactly four first grade paraprofessionals? Like, is that, is there, I don't know, I don't know what I'm asking. Never mind.
Okay.
I'm gonna back away from that question because in my head, I was thinking my example of two and versus four and that just didn't work the way it came out in my head. I apologize, everybody.
I think I'm willing to make proposals... I think I'm willing to make a proposal if we want to. You have more questions?
I have more questions, but I'm happy to ask them about your proposal if you want.
Okay. Okay. Does that seem to make sense? I'm willing to make a proposal. Colin? Or, Eileen? Yeah? Okay. Okay. As a result of two failed votes, I'm gonna make a proposal that we... You know, we've been asked for a lot of creativity. I think that we can maybe get another $100,000 out of option two. If we add that to option one, I get a total of $332,396. I add that to the 500... Oh, well, someone do my math, I'm sorry, private. But if you add that to the 502,000 we already cut from our previous cuts. So, I should add... Okay, what did we cut? It was... So, I'm proposing a further cut tonight of $432,396, which gives us an overall cut from the two votes close to a million dollars.
Coming in where you did, where you got the four, thirty-two, the other one.
Yeah, what are you proposing in that number?
I'm proposing option one plus 100K from option two.
And what would the 100K be from option two?
We're gonna leave that flexibility up to our OIC. Rather than specifying, we're gonna leave that flexibility and ask our superintendent to find another $100,000 out of staffing adjustments based on cohort size.
So, what I see in option one is 232 as a total? And so, we would then adding 100K to that?
Yep. Which would be three.
332.
Yeah, 432. Right, but then... Okay, yeah, sorry.
It's like it's the 332.
Yep, 332 plus the 502.
Right, so it's 800K on the original top line, but 332,000 of this budget.
So, it's 200 shy. So, it's 200K shy of a million. But we're still over...
I definitely am interested in the aggregate number. I wanna make sure I'm really clear on the from-now number. So, we're talking about 332.
Yeah.
From the most recent number that we put up.
Yep.
Okay. All right, here, your proposal.
That's my proposal. Okay.
I'm not sure where I stand on it just yet. 332 taken off the budget tonight. It does give me some pause. It is so critical that this budget passes. It's... I mean, we had so much support in this room tonight, and I have to admit, it makes it harder for me to cut, right? But there's 425 people out there that don't agree with the people in this room tonight.
My concern is... I would like to think there's a huge persuadable universe out there that wants to come and engage with us and be a part of this discussion. I'm just concerned there isn't.
I mean, I would share that concern, which my response to 332 is not dissimilar to Peter's. I'm worried that it may not be enough to rely upon pass the next budget. And I do feel that, sitting in this chair, that is my primary and most important responsibility in this moment, is to try to put up a budget I believe will pass. So, I am concerned about that. Of course, that's based on absolute guesswork and total... It's based on nothing concrete. But I think we did start to hear some of that in the room towards the latter part of the evening as well.
I guess if I'm being asked to cut teachers, certainly, I want to cut the teachers that have the least impact on students. And what I'm hearing that, as the fifth and sixth grade cohort. If we were to add those two teachers to option one plus LED lighting project, that gets us in the neighborhood of half a million.
Yeah, I do also agree with adding the lighting project, Abby, which may be where you had your 400 from before. So, if it's...
That's... Isn't that already in one?
No. So, option one is 232.
Okay.
The lights we were leaving in the budget right now.
Okay.
But I think we should pull them and recover that 120K and find it later.
I agree.
Which can take option one to 352 by itself.
Okay.
With the lighting added back. So, that's $350,000 that my... I do not like doing maintenance, and I do not like the idea of teachers paying for things out of their own pocket. So, I do wanna kind of double-check on that, Karen, but... I'm just concerned it may not be enough.
I don't agree with... I don't disagree with any of the numbers that are being discussed at the moment. And I appreciate common sense and given best practices about cohort size. I would love to know more about their strengths and wishes academically before I would fully support a cut of that.
The cohort-driven cut.
Yeah, the cohort-driven cut.
Can we ask a question of the admin? Did you consider specifically the composition of those classes and not just the number of those students?
Yeah, I mean, those two, every grade in our school has challenges. Those are not two cohorts right now that rise to the top of being our most challenging. There are certainly some challenges that exist within those cohorts that are being supported really successfully because of our senior staff and our support staff that we have available to our students. Provided we're able to continue to provide that level of support for our students, I think that increased class size to the 16 or 17-ish that we're projecting based on that, that type of deal would be good.
And that would be the average class size, 16 to 17 per kid in fifth and sixth grade next year?
Yes.
And we also can look at that pre-k classroom. And that's why I would rather give a certain target number and allow a little bit of flexibility, depending on some real-world scenarios, because it's not just... The option could be that, or it could be that pre-k classroom, which was an add, a lot of us for years.
And so, Abby, your... That's your proposal is option one plus the lights plus find another 100K?
Yep.
Which if you did... That would be 452.
If this gets us in the neighborhood of 500K, I think we could instruct Karen to...
Find 500K.
To pass a budget that's 500K less than it is today. But we don't think, I mean... What does everybody think about that?
That's a million dollars if we're started. That's a significant cut. I don't know if it's enough. Can't answer that question. None of us can. I know. But I don't... I'm not convinced necessarily another million is gonna make... I don't know whether that will really sway enough people. And we may even lose some people. We may lose some yes votes, too.
That didn't... It was implicit in this room tonight, but I think it's really important to consider that anything we do to make the lives of the people left in this building harder makes it less likely that they will be here, no matter how much they love these students. And I cannot support some of the URT's reductions that are proposed in this. I simply can't at this time. But I also feel very concerned that if we appear to be continuing to cut things that look easy to cut in a headline, that we will be pushed to keep cutting. And I have felt that sentiment a lot, even before this budget, but certainly in the last five days. And I... I don't... I don't know how to balance the humanity on both sides of this issue appropriately, but it feels like if it looks easy to do and unimpactful, we're gonna keep getting asked to do it. And I...
This isn't easy.
Don't think that we can keep getting asked to do this and sustain the quality of education we have in this building right now. So, I feel like we have to do something that we believe stands a chance of passing.
I mean, if we pass the same number, 500,000 less than the last budget, but budget A has two teachers cut and budget B has the same amount cut out of supplies, I think Colleen's right. That second budget looks weaker because they just don't believe us. We're not hurting enough. We're not bleeding enough because we aren't cutting people, we aren't cutting teachers. And that's terrible.
But that is cutting teachers.
But I'm saying if you took out whatever is the 150, the reference to two teachers, and you replaced it with supplies or something else that wasn't teachers, that budget would appear... Those cuts would appear to be good for people.
I mean, I hear what you're saying is find... Decide what you wanna do with this number, whether it's 100 or 150K. And I think if that's impossible... God, I can't even think of these words. Like, I don't even want them to come out of my mouth. I just think that we could be right back here if we don't find a way to something pragmatic. And some of those scenarios are really unacceptable, so...
I have other suggestions. If anyone has a...
No, I'm not having to put something out here.
I think I'm agreeing with your suggestion. And I don't feel strongly about... I have more questions about the specific adjustments proposed in number two. But they are all human. And I guess I'm saying that I think unfortunately, we do need to take a human look at this situation that we're in to pass the budget. Not that we haven't already, because we have eliminated jobs already, but... So, Abby, I agree with your one plus lights plus 100 or 150K out of section two. Which actually ends up being essentially, I have the number, I just did the math.
First one, Jacob.
352 plus 150K is 502.
Are you following us?
What number do you want me to...
Okay. This is what I wanna know, Jacob. So, in my current proposed budget, if I cut $120,000 for lights, if I cut, we cut 232,396 plus 100K, which will reflect a staffing reduction given cohort sizes. What number am I at? What is the number I need to put on a warrant that reflects those decisions?
So, you said the cuts of one, an additional 100,000?
From two.
And the lights on top of that?
Yep.
So, I can't say 120,000 for the lights. My spreadsheet has it 100,000. Just as a heads up for that, so that's what I'll use for theirs, but I mean...
Okay, so we... Okay, so take that 20... That $200,000 isn't real, get rid of it.
Yep. So, the new budget amount I'm seeing is 29,347,000.
What was the total cuts for that?
Sorry. 100,000 is...
So, does it put us under 29 million?
Yeah, we're 29,800.
We're 29,800 right now.
What was the total cuts that I was stating?
29... So, the total cuts would be 432,396 dollars.
332 plus your 100.
And it would put you at the 29,347,000.
The 100 is like the one and a half teachers, right? More than this two teachers.
It'd be like 1.2 of the average teacher.
Which, I mean, I appreciate the math. I'm trying to make it as minimal as possible, but in some of these cases, we can't cut parts of people.
Well, you can do half-full-time equivalent.
I mean, I still support the idea, jerking Karen, take out half a million, or whatever we decide on. But I would agree with Colleen. I don't support the URT's cuts. I'm unsure of the kindergarten and first grade pairs.
I...
But yeah, if we keep four pairs, the four first-grade pairs, right? Are they able to be more flexible? Can they help cover, you know, K through one, or is it doesn't work that way?
So, I mean, as general, at pairs, there is some flexibility in terms of, like, they're not tied to one student or one group of students based on out-of-year, like, or out-of-the-accommodation. So, are you wondering, like, can they help, like, cover pair of support number beliefs?
Yes.
I mean, theoretically, yes, to be honest. Those first-class and pairs are, you know, supporting... Are functioning... Are, yes, they have a lot of flexibility. So... But I'm not... I'm struggling to see, like, where... Yes, there's a lot of flexibility for them. We can use them in a lot of ways.
How much of a value adds that to you, to have those four flex pairs?
It's huge. It's really monumental in terms of, like...
I'm sorry, that's not really a fair question.
Yeah, I mean, the jump group regarding to first grade is age-wise developmentally is not that big. Like, they still struggle tying their shoes. They still struggle zipping their jacket. They still have accidents in the bathroom. They still have meltdowns and are crying over little things. Like, they still... One kid, having all of those things could take up the teacher, take the teacher away from, you know, the 15 other kids. So, having another adult there just to help support in those moments is, you know, monumental, but not even to mention how they can, you know, work really closely with the teacher to do some, you know, instruction, do some, you know, small group instruction based on direction who they're not gonna support to remember or the classroom teacher. So, there is, like, the value goes from, like, being able to help a student who still needs support in the bathroom, like, six times a day, to being able to run small group work, you know, double dip or practice with students based on certain training. So, it runs the gamut of what they can do. It is pretty invaluable, like I say. That's the type of deal more, the more, more to stop around to support their students.
I will tell you, we get, you know, we don't... The portion of the budget that supports our parareducators is incredibly small. Just have to put that out there. And at some point, we should, we'll recognize this, you know, what this actually means when it comes down to what... You know, people are struggling. We wanna, we wanna help. We've tried this whole time, and I... This is, this is not...
I still think I support the 500,000 reductions, but I think it needs to come with right sizing those fifth and sixth grade classes. I think that's a responsible thing to do. Certainly, we've been asked to do that.
What does that... What does that mean, though? So, we talked about the following. Oh, great, the cohort following. What does that look like in terms of positioning and endorsement-wise as they go from sixth grade to seventh grade? Where does that put us in a conversation next year?
We would have to, we would have to look at what our, what our positions were in seventh grade next year and who has what licenses and then make a decision about how we... I mean, I think in a lot of ways, I... A lot of ways?
No, 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 yeah. I'm listening. I'm sorry.
I think in a lot of ways, it's similar to the conversation that we have to have around if New York is asking us to move forward with the, with the change for sixth grade. We're going from four teachers to three. In the process, creating a community model where ELA is always studying to be taught together, we would need to consider a similar shift for them as they move to seventh grade and seventh. That's, that's due to be done right now.
No, no.
Obviously, with no, like, significant planning done around with that potentially difference.
I'm still not quite sure exactly where the 500 is coming from. And are we exactly sure on where the 500 is coming from?
So, I guess in my mind, it's the option one, which is 232, right?
Yeah.
Plus 100 for LEDs? No LEDs, right?
Yep.
And then you'd be looking at the bounds for the sixth-grade teacher and possibly a kindergarten teacher?
Pre-k kindergarten.
Or could be the one.
Pre-Ks, the teacher and a para, or kindergarten teacher and para.
Is that the right ballpark, Karen, Jacob?
If you're talking about an additional 100, one, that would be overstepping of the additional 100, I guess if you did. Because like, for instance, one kindergarten classroom between para and teacher would be at 93. Trying to.
947?
The toll, yeah, it would be like, for kindergarten, you'd estimate 93,941, it would be a teacher and para, and 94,170 if you're estimating your pre-K. So those are right there, really close to just 100,000 themselves. That's five through six, that one is just a teacher, so it's a slightly lesser number of the, and again, this also depends on, but those were the estimates.
So I'm. The reduce the fifth and sixth grade alone brings us to 486,535? Because, I mean, I got that number by hand and calculated.
So did I.
I should.
No, I did, and then I added 94 to it, which takes it to 580. And that's, I think, what Jacob just verbally described. Just in the interest of doing math.
And then you added what to it, the 90 you said?
Well, what Jacob just described, so it's 486, and then if we were to contemplate one of those earlier grade level changes as well, that would be another 94, which takes it to 580.
And I mean, we've got, you know, supplies and contracted services in there, we've got deferred maintenance, so it's hard to argue over some of these. But that's what I would suggest, a cut of 500,000. I mean, to me, it's, when you start talking about adding up a bunch of small things like supplies, it can make the day to day life really hard on our school for not a huge savings.
I really don't want to ask people to do more work and pay for more things for their classrooms at the same time, I can't.
So if we talk about the tier one, the hundred dollar show lights, the fifth and sixth grade reduce, and the board didn't accept if we take the stipends out of the board contract, that's 12,000, right? That's in the report, we've talked about that?
I think it's already been, are you, is that still in the budget even though some of them are returned already? Like, what's the status of that number?
They are, they are still in the budget.
Because in theory, they go somewhere.
Yes.
Okay, good.
If I debit that account, it goes into the donated.
Correct.
So even if that's.
I'm happy to give up my statement, let's do that, just.
But what I'm saying is that brings us to 498,535.
Yeah.
And that in good faith is 500. And I very much appreciate the struggle that we're facing. And there's so much evidence about the importance of early education. And I am struggling with, with that cut, knowing how much that saves, maybe not the school, but society and later in life. So I don't, I just want to throw that out there, too.
You think, Tom?
But, but also, like, the first round has gone out and there's taxes that come out of it, so it's not exactly until I'm ready, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to, you know, eliminate pairs, and I'm sure the need is great, you know, at that level. I think if we did have a, you know, just like the blanket 100,000 route for the fifth and sixth, it's got to be really clear that, you know, in the messaging that this is, that's what it's for specifically, you know, that it's not some vague number we just came up with. You know, I just think that would be important.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Nancy, no, it's a Nancy question. Just speaking to the early ed numbers, I, the cohort stuff, this anticipated pre-K number for next year, how, is that what you know right now or your best guess based on?
That 30?
Yes.
Number, no, that's, if, we are licensed to have 15 children in each class.
Right.
So if we have two classrooms, we'll have 30.
So that's what I wanted to know, was with chicken or egg here, so this number.
That doesn't rec, that doesn't show what's out in the community.
That's what I was asking.
It's just showing us what we can have.
Okay, so do we know what's out in the community? Like, if we have three sections, are they full?
It's hard, you know, because that would be the current three-year-olds.
Right.
Who aren't all in programs necessarily.
Right.
So, and then some students who are in fourth stay in their, yeah, pre-K program or switch, it's, it's a really, really number, it's really hard to.
We have three sections of pre-K right now.
We do.
How many kids are enrolled right now in pre-K?
We enrolled 36 at the start of the year, and then there was some, you know, a couple kids moved out, and we're at 32 right now. So again, the smaller classes, you meet their needs. But you have all heard me discuss the needs that are out in the programs as well.
Okay, thank you. I just realized that this number may have been altered based on the two, and I wanted to know that, and it is, in fact. Okay, thank you.
I mean, I guess I would like to see the number be 500, but I'm certainly not going to vote against 498.
I'm not going to vote against the other way either, so. Do we feel strongly that we need to specify the, I mean. So how, how does that? If, if everything isn't specified, how does that move forward, right? Like, you and the initiative team would have to make some decisions within the framework that we've provided to you, and then we would come up with a camp, a marketing campaign, public awareness around what those decisions are and how that works?
But ultimately, I guess it's really not necessarily, we need to take broad strokes to sort of be in line with. More normal process.
Meaning, meaning, pick a number.
Pick a number and put it up.
Put it up and, and.
So slate it.
I mean, it's over.
No, no, I know, I just, but I, I think there is, I don't, I don't want to be the person that sort of brings the other thing onto the table, but there is the specificity that, that needs to exist by Friday, certainly is a component of this. And I think I'll just say, I'll say and stick a pin in the other question of, do we need to, Karen, contemplate any other layers of holding? I mean, obviously, I don't want to do any of this, but we had discussed at the finance committee meeting, the dynamic around distributing contracts prior to them being certainly funded, and that hasn't really been something we've talked much about tonight, and that does not need to derail the dialogue about a number and the budget we're going to put up next, but I also don't want to leave tonight without understanding if we need to have more discussion about that than having it ultimately, because it has to happen between now and Friday.
I think we should convene a finance committee meeting to provide more details.
Okay.
Not before we make a vote, but before Friday.
In, in terms of other decisions around teacher, teacher contracts. Okay, okay.
I am willing to take public comment, does anybody want to, wants to comment on a specific proposal? Anything from the chat, Abby?
We only want to have the clarification.
Okay.
So as of right now, they're proposing to cut one pre-K, one kindergarten, and two, five, six teachers. Am I following correctly?
No. No, no. What we're, what we're doing is we are, the clearest way to sort of, the way I'm thinking about it, is that we are combining option one and option two, there will be some, there will be reductions. Or there, yeah, there, yeah, we're gonna, yeah. There will be reductions. And that by Friday, when teacher contracts go out, we'll be able to provide a little bit more specificity around this.
Don't want to, I'm going to speak pretty freely here, but I realize I'm sitting on stage, so it's not exactly, I'm being recorded. Karen, I don't want to not have a hard conversation now and hand it back to you, so I also am very willing to be more specific, and I'm also willing to do what is appropriate and maybe hand the number to you and let that be normal. This is, this is my first rodeo, so I just, do, do you feel like you have the direction you need from this board if we give you a number? And that you and your team would have what you need to sit down and interact with these options? Or do you need more from us?
No, I think you, you know, based on what you've said.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not kicking a can.
And I think it's, I hear what you're saying, and I think it's important, though, that we do have the difficult conversations. Because I think that part of the thoughtfulness of the process is having those difficult conversations in public.
Good point.
I mean, I think I already said it, but I, I'm more inclined to react to cohort numbers and leave early education alone. That is my perspective personally. Okay, the same.
So you're at 498,0535?
Linda says yes.
Is that right, Jacob? 100,000 for lights.
From what you were saying, yes, but I'm not 100% sure if that's what everyone is in agreement on doing.
We're about to find out.
Okay.
Can I, can I say one thing, like, that you know about?
Yes, it is welcome.
So I just want to say, putting it apart, it's really hard to hear you guys say that people that voted no want blood and like, and I, I've never been on the board, I don't know how this stuff works, but I don't, just to be like, we're hurt a lot today from what we want to have to the budget. And we're assuming that the people that are voting no want, want this very drastic number. I don't know, like, so I'm just nervous if you're about to vote on something and make decisions. And I understand there's like, oh my gosh, this budget fails and like, we're all going to go with extra cliff, but I'm just, I, I'm just, yeah, I'm nervous about what you're about to do. And I'd love to say that I have favor for the community that we can pull this off, but.
Ready to move on to budget number?
Okay, I'm still not 100% sure what I'm warning, so I need Jacob to tell me that number, because you're my finance director.
So at the 498, 540.
You speak, I can't hear.
Five reduction.
I'm sorry, I, I, you have to, sorry.
29,281,753 with the reduction that you were just talking about.
Okay, I'm going to give that back to you, ready? 29,281,750.
Yes.
Do you want our, our motion to be the exact number, or do you want it to stay no more than?
I'll leave that, Karen.
No more than the 100? If I'm watching this again. But we'd have to get it printed and. All right. Yeah, just a second, I need to just get. Okay, I have to have the specific warrant language there, right? Ah, I don't, this I do. I have it. Okay, I make a motion that we approve the following warrant in language. The voters of the town of St. John's, the voters of the town's school district of St. Johnsbury, Vermont are hereby notified and warned to meet on Monday, May 6, 2024, at the St. Johnsbury School Auditorium at 254 Western Ave, and Tuesday, May 7, 2024, at the town office building at 51 D. Square in the town of St. Johnsbury, as follows, on Monday, May 6, 2024, at 6:00 PM, to meet only to discuss the following articles to be voted on May 7, 2024, by Australian ballot between 8:00 AM and 7:00 PM. On Tuesday, May 7, 2024, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 7:00 PM, to vote on the following school district articles by Australian ballot. Article one, shall the voters of St. Johnsbury, shall the voters of the town of St. Johnsbury School District approve the school board to expend no more than 29,281,753 in general funds, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes. I think I'm going to table the rest of the business unless there's anything, well, I've been to table all business except for, we need to approve a new hire. This is a position that's already been existed, we just need to fill an open position, so we're clear on that. This is specifically for a special educator, she comes well recommended by, by our administration. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the new hire for Allison Kir. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Yeah, this is a new position, this is just about filling. This is not a new position, correct. Okay, I'd also like to go ahead and accept the resignations of following divisions. of following individuals with great respect, uh, with great regret, but excitement for the next stage of her career. Timmy McQueen, who was our fifth grade communities teacher, will be moving on as the principal of Lunenburg School. And we want to thank her for the five years that she spent with us. We have a first grade teacher, Leah Reisner, who submitted her resignation. Leah's been with us for two years, I believe. We have a, a behavioral support, Maggie LeBeck. I believe with grateful appreciation. Leah's been here for five. Gosh, time has just been weird, hasn't it? COVID. I swear, I was just talking to her about where my kid was going to go to preschool, before she even came here. And Taylor, I'm not going to pronounce that correctly, not tonight. Thank you. Who had been working as her third to fifth, uh, school counselor. So we would like to greatly thank them all for their service. Oh, one more, and Karen, I would take actually your absence from this school, but she will be resigning her position as a speech and language pathologist as of next year. Do we take, all in favor of accepting those resignations, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, give me a second to look at my agenda and see if there's anything else we need to do. That can't be. And that's it? Anybody else to go to the order?
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Sorry.
Meetings, I'd like to make motion to adjourn the meeting at nine fifty-four. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?